I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation with Reverend Nelson, oh, excuse me, yeah, Nelson Nissley. I hope I've pronounced that correctly. Thank you. Please proceed.
Let's pray. Lord God, I thank you for these men and women who serve the residents of Clay County. Give them all strength and perseverance to accept all the kudos and criticisms that come their way. I pray, Lord, that you give these commissioners godly wisdom, godly strength, and godly patience as they conduct their business of the county on the docket today. I pray all this in the holy name of our glorious Creator and Savior. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of the agenda? Commissioner, let me get on the right screen here. There we are. Commissioner Wagner?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay. Motion has been made for the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any, any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to ceremonial matters. We have two issues on that. Administrator, would you start us off with 2023-129?
Proclamation 2023-129 is declaring June 15th, 2023, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Clay County. And we have Tina Yurich here to accept the proclamation and share a little information about the day with the commission.
Please come forward. By the way, as she makes her way forward, anyone who wishes to address the commission as you come up to the podium, please make sure that the button is pushed so the light is green, state your name and where you're from, and then proceed from there. With that, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Tina Yurich, Clay County Senior Services Director, and we're honored to be here to accept the proclamation for World Elder Abuse Education Awareness Day, which is coming up June 15th. We have some of our partners here, Haley from the City of Liberty, there she is, and we also have Kurt Hamilton with Carney Enrichment Council and the Carney Senior Center, and our staff person, Vicki Hahn with Clay County Senior Services. I would just like to call out a couple of statistics. Experts believe that for every case of elder abuse or neglect reported, as many as 23 cases go unreported. In Missouri during fiscal year 2022, the Department of Health and Senior Services received and investigated 42,319 reports of abuse, neglect, bullying, and exploitation involving seniors and adults with disabilities living in the community and in facilities. That amounts to an average of 116 reports every day. The number of cases is rising, but still vastly understates the extent of the problem because of the victim often has an emotional bond with the perpetrator. Seniors and people with disabilities may be socially isolated and physically dependent on the perpetrator, which sometimes sadly is often a family member, making it nearly impossible for them to report for fear of losing their last vestiges of independence. And of course, I'd like to, you know, the Clay County Sheriff does a tremendous job of investigating those things and the county prosecutor and all the, is Will here? Okay. Oh, is he? And we also have some excellent financial bankers that keep an eye out at particularly one here in Liberty, Jackie Murtha, you probably know her. And so we have advocates that are really out there keeping their eyes peeled for abuse. But one of the worst are the scams, the financial scams that are going on are just crazy. And I think, I imagine we all know of someone who has been victimized by a financial scam, a phone scam, a business scam. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think we've all, any of us who have been in public service for any length of time have run into issues of that sort. I ran into one when I was first elected into this office, and I, it was a scam more than abuse, still a very serious matter. It was a sad story, and I was able to get a good bit of help from the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. Sometimes you just need to put the right people on the case to put the fear of God into some of these people.
Yes, yeah. Be alert.
Yeah, so we certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate the fact that the Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor's Office, and everybody in government works towards the same goal of protecting our seniors and in the larger circle of the partners you had just mentioned and so many others outside of this, of these walls that are working tirelessly to protect our seniors because, you're right, they are entirely vulnerable in these situations. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
We did bring some bookmarks that we left out there in front that everyone can pick up and a few for you all.
Sure. I'm sorry.
We can get a photo, Kurt and Haley, and I assume, maybe, maybe not.
Okay. Ah, success.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. I just want to, once again, thank you for, you know, you were here recently, thank you for your work. I think it's really important, and I wanted to highlight what you said there at the end about sort of financial-related scams. I think all the evidence suggests that those are on the, on the increase to a pretty significant degree. And I think, you know, with some of the changes happening technologically, they're sort of becoming easier to attempt the scams by making it easier to impersonate people, that kind of thing. And so I don't know if, obviously, a big part of it is on the law enforcement prosecution side, but maybe an even bigger part is going to be on sort of just the awareness and educational side of things, making people aware so that they can prevent being victims of the scams in the first place.
Absolutely.
And I'm just wondering, does, do you all, you know, work in that space in terms of trying to build awareness on that?
You know, and I'm glad you asked that question because, you know, we are not the Department of Health and Senior Services, although people often confuse us in that regard. So they're the ones handling the report of abuse and investigating that. However, we advocate, we try to educate our partners, our seniors. We ask that anybody that we are providing funding to, that they have a mechanism and are aware of how to report elder abuse and what to look for. So we really try to, you know, do that outreach and awareness.
Good deal. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, thank you very, does anyone else of the associations that you are working with care to comment on? No. Okay. No problem.
We're all wearing purple because that's the color.
Almost purple.
I know.
Almost purple tie. So we will go ahead and come around and we'll get some, we'll give you the certificate and kind of get some photos if that sounds good, and then we'll reconvene.
Can I get a couple on this side, please? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready? One, two, three, couple there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking this class, you're just sick of you. Thank you.
Next on our agenda under ceremonial matters is 2023-191. Administrator, I'll let you go ahead and introduce that, and I believe this is sponsored by Commissioner Wagner, so I will recognize him after you introduce it for his comments.
Resolution 2023-191 is a resolution honoring Deputy Jonathan Brandsfield, and this is brought to us sponsored by Commissioner Wagner.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you very much, and I know others will have things to say, but I will just note, two weeks ago, after we had our last commission meeting, I feel like a meeting of even greater importance occurred just a few hours later, the location of which was a little bit unusual, but the matter was one, I think, of life and death, and that is what had occurred on, at the Worlds of Fun Water Tower. Those of you who saw that, the news reports that came of it are aware of a young person who climbed that tower with the intent of ending his life, but before doing so, wanted to reach out to one person. And I would note, as a parent of children, most people here have children, we always like to think that we are our children's best support system, that if they have a problem, they will reach out to us, but that's not always the case. But they always reach out to someone trusted, and that trusted person in this case was the person we're honoring today, Deputy Jonathan Brandsfield. We have a resolution for you today, but before I read a couple portions from it, I just have to note, it is one thing for someone to have trust, it is another for someone to listen to the person that they trust. And I have no idea what you said that night, but I'm darn glad you did. And for some of us parents, we'd probably like to pull you aside and just ask you what you said because we might want to use that sometimes with our own children, but I thank you for that. Our resolution today, some of the excerpts that I'll read today say, whereas Deputy Brandsfield was requested by the student to visit him so he could say goodbye, at which point Deputy Brandsfield was successfully able to talk the student down from the tower, and whereas Deputy Brandsfield's action illustrates the importance of the relationships all SROs have in our schools and the value they can bring to individual students, now therefore be resolved. The Clay County Commission thanks Deputy Jonathan Brandsfield for his extraordinary commitment to his duty, the students under his care, and the people of Clay County, and further thank all SROs in the Clay County Sheriff's Department for the work that they do with the youth of Clay County. I know many of your brother deputies will not have the situation that you faced, but we also recognize the value that all of our SROs have with our students in our schools in Clay County. So with that, I thank you. I hope you never have to go through another situation like that, but you were the man at the right place at the right time, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Before we break for our, to make the presentation, Commissioner Lawson, I believe you wish to be recognized?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how unbelievably proud I am of you. All of us are. And it just further lets us see what an exemplary department we have under Sheriff Aiken. I mean, all of you are so professional, so well-trained, so dedicated, and it just makes us unbelievably proud to represent you. So I want to just thank you a million for what you've done. It just further shows how much of an impact these, that law enforcement has in this county. Look at the other evening, we had the deputies that arrested the criminal, a lifetime criminal, and that guy's going to get put away, I hope, for a very long time. Found all of this, all of these stolen IDs and everything else that they got. You're just, all of you are amazing, so thank you for what you did, thank you for saving that young man. You know, for him to look to you for help has got to make you feel like a billion dollars. We're just so proud of you. Thank you a million.
Commissioner Withington, I think you sought recognition?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you, Deputy, for everything you've done. Proud to know you, got to know you at my kid's school, Maple Park. I'm glad you're going to Winnetonka, you could be my son's eyes and ears for me next year, and I also happen to have two of your rookie cards, so I'm gonna put those next to my Mickey Mantle cards, but, and all seriousness though, I appreciate everything you do, and thanks for your service and appreciate your friendship, man.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe you sought recognition?
Yeah. So I think it was kind of ironic, and it was mentioned the night before this incident, we recognized, thanks to Commissioner Withington, all of the SROs in the county for the work that they do. And I actually had commented that night that it's not only about the safety that you guys provide, but the relationships that you bought, that you provide in building with those people. And Commissioner Wagner talked about the curiosity of wanting to know what you said to that individual. I think more important, and what you said is who said it, and the fact that it came from you. And no matter what was said, it could come from anybody else, it wouldn't matter. It mattered that it came from you. And that has to do with that relationship that you built up with that individual, and that's, that's just, I mean, you can't put money on that. That's just beyond, that's just beyond comprehension. And oftentimes, I know in law enforcement, you guys do things on a regular basis, that's just, that's just part of the job, it's what you do, you don't think much about it, but it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And what you did is a big deal, and as a father of three, I can tell you it's a huge deal. And I'm familiar with, with people who have had, had mental illnesses and, as well as you guys are, and it's a tough thing to cope with, a tough thing to deal with. And what you did, although you might think it was just part of your job, something you do on a regular basis, and SROs are doing this kind of stuff, that's a big deal. And just know that, don't ever get so callous and not realize that what you do is incredible. And the community truly appreciates what you do, so thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to share and offering the thanks to y'all. I think it says a lot that, you know, in his moment of crisis, that that young person wanted to reach out to you. I mean, I think it does really speak to, you know, the positive force that you can have in, in the lives of all these young people. You know, when I was younger, I lost my brother to suicide, and I can tell you that you didn't just, you know, help save that young person's life, you helped a whole family for the rest of time. And just really grateful to all of you for the work you do every day. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Now, I also will just chime in and say, I don't know what more I can add besides saying that thank you so much for all the work that you do, and our resource officers are a huge part of our children's lives, and I would say so my youngest, my eldest, I'm sorry, my eldest is actually starting kindergarten this year, so there'll be lots of adventures with him, and some of you may be seeing him very soon, depending on where you're at and all the trouble he may get into, but I personally, as a mother, would be honored if he were to reach out to any of you for help. And I know, like Commissioner Wagner said, that as a parent, we would hope that they would come to us first, but I know our, our law enforcement and our resource officers would play a huge part in their upbringing in our community, and as a mother, I thank you and all of you and all the work you do, and I'm very proud of you. So, and I'll bake you cookies anytime, so you just let me know.
Yeah, and I'd also like to say, you know, thank you very much, and we certainly honor your commitment to our citizens. It is so rare in life that any of us have, are in a position to where it is so, we so directly would save another person's life. Most of us don't have that opportunity and the privilege, that's one of the things that sets law enforcement apart from the rest of us, is I would think that there is a significant number of people in law enforcement that have that kind of direct saving of another person's life, and that, that's something we honor you for, but I, my guess is that's also something that you find humbling, that while you acknowledge that, given the caliber of ladies and gentlemen serving in our law enforcement and in our county deputies, I would think that you are honored, but I would think you are humble because you're just that, that high-quality individual. So thank you so much for what you do. This is a shining example of the kind of things that happen frequently with, with our law enforcement personnel. It's just an honor for us to be able to point to that and spotlight that so that other citizens can understand the contribution you make to our county. Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and present the certificate.
Okay, one, let's scooch a little bit. Two, three. Thank you.
That brings us, that concludes our ceremonial matters. That brings us to public comments, and I believe we have a representative from Jefferson City who represents part of our county. Representative, please proceed.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Representative Bill Allen, and Commissioners, I just want to thank you so much for the flexibility and a chance to join on in this ceremony. It's such an important time that we do this. I think our law enforcement needs all of our support more now than ever, and this is just one way to do that. I'm here not only for myself, but I want to be clear that the Speaker of the House, Dean Plaucher, and the Majority Floor Leader, Jonathan Patterson, wanted to be here for this. They were involved, which is unusual for the House, they were involved in helping draft the resolution, so they want to send their personal appreciation. They want you to know that this is a big deal in the county, it's the biggest thing that's happened in a while in terms of this kind of thing, but it's also a big deal for the entire state of Missouri. I was proud this year to be able to sponsor some legislation that supports and strengthens SROs. Governor Parson has indicated he will sign that into law, and I'm proud to be a part of that on behalf of all the SROs. Jonathan, I will spare you reading an endless number of wherethes, and I know that nobody wants to hear a politician talk for very long, but I want you to know that this, this has reached the highest levels of our state government, we appreciate what you did, we acknowledge it, and SROs, this has shown all of us, this is a premier program, and we all need to be on board and supporting this and making sure there are laws on the books that help you to do your job safely and, and the way that students deserve. So Commissioners, at your discretion, I'd love for you to join me in a photo, and Jonathan, if you'd come on up, I'd love to give this to you.
All right.
Thank you.
time? Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This afternoon, there are five items on the consent agenda. Commission meeting minutes for April 26th. Resolution 2023-184, approving the use of county grounds for the City of Liberty Arts Commission for the Eighth Annual Make Music Day Event. Resolution 2023-185, approving the sale or disposal of surplus auction items stipulated under the Code of Ordinances. Resolution 2023-187, approving a revocable event license for the annual Lily's War Event fireworks display and King's Company archery event in the parks. And Resolution 2023-188, approving the use of county grounds by the Liberty Parks and Recreation Department for the annual Liberty Summer Band 2023 outdoor concerts.
Is there a motion related to our consent agenda?
Move to approve today's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on our regular agenda is 2023-186. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-186 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error. The applicant is here, Mr. Stanley Betts, along with the assessor Tracy Baldwin and collector Barbara O'Reilly.
Okay. Please proceed with the, do we need a, the applicant like to come up and kind of explain? Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see where the applicant was sitting. Please come forward and state your name and give us your, your information, please.
I apologize, I'm hearing impaired, and I'm not understanding a word that's been said in here.
We'll try to, we'll try to speak a little more loudly, I have a little bit of that myself.
I don't know, it's something about an echo or something, when these hearing aids, I made every attempt to file my tax each spring to renew the update, the items I buy and sell, and I missed, they don't send out the paperwork like they used to, where we could write down what we sold, we could scratch it out, we could add what we bought. So I, we spend the winters in Texas, and we're away from the Clay County, but I received this card, and I followed the instructions the best I could, and all I used is my phone. But I went on there, the site, and I entered in, for the taxes, in 21 items I scratched out that I sold, and I added the items that I bought, and I assumed everything was, was okay, but I wasn't sure. So I called the number that's on this card, followed those instructions. When I called that number, it said that they apologized and said, try your call later. I tried later, same thing. Tried a few days later, same thing, nothing happened. So it, I forgot about it, I assumed it was okay. So I went to the next year and got the statement, and again, I went back on the line and I made the entries trying to add the vehicles that I traded for, we sold a car and bought another car, and, and it had the same response. So I had the same phone number I had the year before, I dialed that number, and it said, call back later. I waited a few days later, I called back, same thing, I tried three times, call back later. So then, when we got home, I saw a deputy sheriff and got, told him my, my problems and asked, he gave me a different phone number, then I was able to communicate with, I don't know if there's the assessor or the collector, but anyway, they verified, they saw where I made, went online with my phone and attempted to When I called that number, it said that they apologized and said, "Try your call later." I tried later, same thing. Tried a few days later, same thing. Nothing happened. So it, I forgot about it. I assumed it was okay. So I went to the next year and got the statement, and again, I went back on the line and I made the entries trying to add the vehicles that I traded for. We sold a car and bought another car, and it had the same response. So I had the same phone number I had the year before. I dialed that number, and it said, "Call back later." I waited a few days later, I called back, same thing. I tried three times. Call back later. So then, when we got home, I saw a deputy sheriff and told him my problems and asked, he gave me a different phone number. Then I was able to communicate with, I don't know if there's the assessor or the collector, but anyway, they verified, they saw where I made, went online with my phone and attempted to put the things in, but something went wrong. But what the situation is, I had an old horse trailer, I sold a trailer and I bought a camper, and then a year later, I traded a car, a Honda car, for a Ford car. So I got the same number of items before, a few years newer. My tax bill was about $240 for my personal property. So then, a few days later, I got a statement that my balance now on my account is over $500. So I was really surprised by that amount being twice, over twice what it was the previous years. And so I, I'm willing to pay the taxes that they say I owe, but I wanted to waive the penalty and interest, and I'll pay the tax. But these taxes are out of control. I know it takes a lot of money to run the county, but you've got a lot of folks paying. But what we're doing, we're paying more today for our personal property tax than when we bought our property. We paid our property tax, our taxes, our insurance, the interest and principal. And today, just the amount to the county is more than what it took to pay off my home. And it takes about two months of my Social Security check to pay your tax. And now, after trading these vehicles, I still have the same number, but you want another half a month of my check for that. So I'm hoping someday that there'll be something for senior citizens, and we paid these taxes for over 50 years, to give us a break. Good gosh. But, so that's all I'm asking for today is to knock off the interest and penalties, and this number has been on this form for over two years. And when they, the lady I talked to in April said, "It's a wrong number. It's a misprint. It's a mistake by the printer." But in two years, you'd think they would correct it. So anyway, that's what I was hoping for.
Are there any questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Lawson?
Well, yeah, the only thing I'd like to have, whoever would be in charge of that to address it, is have they looked at that assessment? And if the, and I realize there were probably newer vehicles, but in fact, is the amount he's talking about that it's doubled, is that the correct amount?
Well, that's what-
We'll have Tracy tell us.
Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. Yes, to answer your question, that is the correct amount, and there's quite a difference from a stock trailer to an RV fifth-wheel camper, so that's where a majority of it. Plus, there was a newer vehicle that was added to replace another, so that's where the majority of the increase was.
Okay. Tracy, one more thing then. So when he was trying to call and calling the wrong number, and then he finally got to the proper number and all?
Well, I'd like to address that whole thing. In 2019 is the last year that we sent out paper forms. 2020 with COVID, we started sending out electronically. Each taxpayer on those forms could request the paper form still, so he could have requested that. There, our first reminder gets mailed, though, January 1st, and Mr. Betts, I believe, lived in the county for many, many years, and that date's always been January 1st. So we send out a reminder in January. The postcard that he's referring to this year goes out in the last week of March, so that would have been his second reminder. These are, we're still talking about his prior assessment that was incorrect as well. That's why there was penalties and interests. So there's no errors on the assessor or collector in this matter.
What about the phone number?
I can't answer what number you were calling.
Well, it's right there. You want to call it? See what it says?
The number on this year's-
Hold on. One person may talk at a time at the dais right now. The assessor is addressing that, so a conversation between the two of you is not appropriate. Mr. Assessor, please address the question.
To address that question, this number was actually put on this year for the first time. This is actually this year's. Last year actually had the correct phone number. This year, when that number was added, we had found that it was changed to a different. But again, we have online, we have two locations, we have multiple websites with multiple phone numbers. There's, and this was a second notice again. They're due in January 1st.
But just to revisit, just to kind of get to the heart of it, the number printed on the document there is an incorrect number?
The number on this year's document, you know, it wouldn't have been on last year's because I believe what I had heard was this number was changed this year recently. Once we printed this, we figured out that that was an internal county phone number instead of a public. So when you dial it from outside the county, it will get incorrect. But we did have an answering service that was answering that call for several weeks from this phone number. So, but again, I'd like to stress that there, we have multiple locations in the county. We have email addresses, other phone numbers, so.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner, I believe you had a question or comment?
Just a comment, I think. Well, question and a comment, I guess. The question is, just so I understand, the amount that is being requested for the waiver is essentially $104, give or take a few cents. Okay. So that's the question. The comment is, it strikes me that although this, although there is a process that the assessor and collector's office follows, to me, it is almost less of a question of was the process followed rather than do we agree with the process that was followed? And what I mean by that is, as was just noticed, the card suggests that if someone wants to get a paper version, they can. However, that presumes that someone's going to go through that card to get to that point, in which case this is opting into a paper system as opposed to opting out of the paper system. And to me, that is a big difference, right? It's almost like when you go online and you have to hit "I accept" before you can go do whatever you're going to do, right? You have to do that. Does everyone read through that? No, they do not. And so I tend to think this is a similar sort of situation, and so to, for me, this is more of, yes, there's a process. Was the process followed? Sounds like it wasn't, but I guess I'm left with, do I agree with our process? Because clearly, in your case, you attempted to, but because you didn't have a computer and you were in Texas at the time, I'll wager, going to our offices doesn't exactly work for you.
That's right.
And the phone doesn't necessarily do what a desktop computer or a laptop can do. Am I kind of looking at it from your perspective correctly? Is that the way you see it?
I didn't understand you, but I'm willing to pay the tax that they're asking for. I just wanted to knock off the penalties and interest, you know? If someone would have answered the phone that was on here?
Yeah.
You know, it would have been taken care of.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that's the only way I knew how to communicate with you.
But if I may ask, normally, when you get a paper, when you got the paper version, how did you deal with the paper version back in the day? Like, when you, when you, when you received the paper version, when did you fill it out? When did you send it in? I'm sorry if you're not hearing me correctly.
I didn't have a paper version. All I got was the tax bill.
Right, right.
And the tax bill, we paid it.
Yeah.
And we paid it, you know, when it was due.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
You may know this, Jerry, since you were down at the state, isn't there some kind of a, I believe there's some kind of a senior tax relief that people can get, seniors can get assistance with their taxes?
Are you talking, are you talking about that is currently in place or that was in place?
Yes, currently in place.
There is a, I believe the circuit breaker issue, the circuit breaker program is still in place. That dealt largely with low-income seniors. There was the Homestead Preservation Act, which the Senate at the time declined to renew, and that would have been maybe 2011, something like that. There is legislation as far as more property tax, I'm not sure if it, how much it applies to personal property tax.
Oh, okay.
But there is currently a bill before the governor. Whether or not he signs it is obviously unknown until he actually does it. At that point, we would be able to then take a look at it. It would not become available for us to act upon until the end of August, which is when laws take effect, generally speaking. So that would be when we could be looking at a general property tax relief. As far as the personal goes, I think there have been some attempts, and my guess is there will be further attempts at personal property tax relief. And then finally, something that's come up before, it was Senate Bill 711. This was probably in the 2009, 2010 realm. That was a change not, not, in a way, based on Clay County, and that was that up until that legislation was passed, the county did not have the authority to waive penalty and interest even if the county acknowledged error. We changed that, so now the state of the law, as I understand it, is that we have the authority, if there is an error on the part of the county, to waive penalty and interest, and that is the limit that we can go to. Apart from that, we are bound by state law.
So that's the problem, Stan. It's not that we all wouldn't want to say, "Drop it," but by law, we are prohibited unless one of the, like, the assessor or the collector were to say, "We made a mistake. Clay County made a mistake." If they say we did, then we can eliminate that, but if they refuse to say that it was a mistake, then our hands are tied, and were we to eliminate that for you? We would be breaking a statute. So, I mean, it just comes down to that. And I agree that that number being wrong kind of threw you for a loop, and I know you travel a lot, so that causes the difficulty. Everybody isn't always here, and everybody isn't real whippy on the computers. So, you know, it's kind of a double whammy on that, but that's our dilemma right now.
Mr. Assessor, I think you wanted to say something?
I would like to address one more thing. Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. If you look at these, these penalties and interest were for prior years. The card that Mr. Betts is mentioning is for your '23 assessment, and those are due by March 1st. When Mr. Betts came in on April 11th, we helped him through correcting his past assessments. That's where the penalties and interests came from. 2023, since it was March 11th, our office did go ahead and waive the penalty for this year because he was late, because there were some computer issues with the mailing and stuff. So on our side, we did waive it for the '23, but these interests and penalties are for prior years because there was correct reporting.
By the way, Mr. Assessor, something that I think is worth acknowledging, and you kind of alluded to this, and that is that there are a number of appeals for penalty and interest, and that a substantial number are resolved by your office and don't make it up to our, up to our office.
Yes, and you know, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. I had talked with some of the other Commissioners about this, and I had mentioned that, that, you know, you guys see the ones that we don't work out or resolve. Anytime there is a question of these penalties and interests, me and Barbara will talk about these beforehand, and both of our departments will research the exact what happened. If we figure that there's any kind of an error on either one of the parts, we waive them. It's not that, you know, we want to be hard on this and do it. We do want to help the taxpayer with these. But without, without a penalty, what good are deadlines? And, you know, the taxing entities in Clay County depend on those deadlines. So in your words, yes, you don't see the majority of these. The ones that we can't satisfy the taxpayer, those are the ones that come in from the Commission.
Are there any other questions or comments on this issue? Well, I'd like to, I'd like to give the applicant, Mr. Betts, I'd like to give you the opportunity to have the last word before I ask for a motion on this, so if you have anything you'd like to conclude with?
Well, the, you know, I tried to communicate with them, and that's all I'm asking for, the penalties in this, and they acknowledged that they could see on the record somehow where I attempted to correct my assessment like it should have, but it didn't happen and didn't go through, and I couldn't tell with my phone, so. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. With that, is there a motion related to 2023-186? And I would ask Commissioners to keep in mind that such a motion should include which box to be checked on the resolution, and obviously, if we chose to, we could take it up if further information was sought. So is there a motion from a Commissioner related to 2023-186? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I move to mark, I move to mark the box for 2023-186 for denial for the request for waiver of fees, interest, and penalties.
Motion has been made for the passage of 2023-186 with the box denied indicated. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me put you back on.
Sorry. I close.
Just for two words.
Just for two words.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
I think I'm, oh, sorry. For Mr. Betts, you'd indicated earlier that you were concerned about the amount of your county taxes and that they were too high as they applied to the county.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure you understand, looking at your bill, it was $550, right?
Yeah.
Less than $12 goes to Clay County, just so you know. Most, the vast majority of your bill.
I know it's not the county.
Okay. I just want to make sure you understood it, because it sounded like you, you know, what we, our role in this is very limited.
That brings us to the next issue, and that would be 2023 Ordinance 14. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 14 is consideration of reappropriate and revise the adopted budget, the current budget, for the juvenile detention area in the amount of $25,000, and Janet Rogers is here to provide information to the Commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Janet Rogers, Juvenile Officer and Director of Juvenile Court Services for Clay County. This is a request to transfer money to the detention food budget. Our increase in our number of kids has increased by 200% from 2022's first quarter. Reason being, many detention centers have closed across the state. There have also been detention centers that have had to shut down temporarily across the state due to COVID and the lack of staffing. It's been a big issue. So we have tried to accommodate the other counties and circuits. If they need kids detained, we have detained for other counties, and in doing so, we charge that county a fee, a daily fee for their children or juveniles to stay, and we also charge the state, because we get so much money reimbursed to us from the state for our population. So our- So our actual reimbursement from counties and states in the first quarter is $54,467 back to Clay County. Projected for the year, I believe, in the budget was right around $24,000 or $26,000, so we've already exceeded the entire year's projections for revenue in this line. We are asking that $25,000 of that be diverted back into the food line, because we are almost out of money in that in order to feed the juveniles in detention. We, of course, our population's higher, they're staying longer because of some of the logistical, the court dates have had to be spread out a little bit. The kids, you know, come from Buchanan County, they come from Ray, Platt, Livingston. We have some all the way from up near Kirksville. So they have ended up staying a little bit longer in detention, and we have to feed them. And of course, we're charging the counties the money for their stay.
So am I right that the monies that we collect from the state and the other counties does not cover the cost, that there's a shortfall?
The monies that they reimburse go straight into the revenue account. It does not come to the juvenile office and go into the, yeah, it comes to you, well, to the county budget, and we're just asking some of that revenue that's been, that has been collected in the last several months come to the food line budget at the juvenile office so that we can feed the kids.
And I believe you mentioned that it was due in part to some closing down temporarily. Was I correct in hearing that?
Yes, Cass County Juvenile Detention had to close down for several months due to staffing shortage, so we took a large number of their, I mean, they probably, we probably took between 20 and 40 kids in the several months that they were down. They have reopened. I don't know if they're going to, hopefully, they will stay open. If not, then we will continue, we will house their kids again.
So does that take some of the pressure off as these facilities reopen as far as the pressure on our juvenile facilities?
It should help, however, there are a lot of circuits that do not even have detention facilities, and we do hold for them as well, and our numbers have, our Clay County numbers have gone up in the first quarter. And it's just, I think it's taken a few years from COVID to really get back in the swing of things, and that we're just seeing our numbers go up, plus the raise the age situation where kids are now considered juveniles until the age of 18. Two years ago, it was the age of 17, so we didn't have to deal with the 17-year-olds. They were dealt with in the adult system. Now the juvenile system has to address the 17-year-olds, and we have seen a big increase in our referral numbers at the juvenile office because of that. We have a lot of 17-year-olds.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just the kind of the short and sweet of it for the folks at home and for me, is this all zeroes out at the end of the year. This is really a matter of advancing cash forward that we've essentially already received for what we've done in the first quarter. So it's just moving from account to account to account, and at the end of the day, there's really, even though we're seeing larger numbers of individuals, which is unfortunate, at the end of the day, this is not a financial burden to the county per se, it's just moving the cash to accommodate the flow of individuals that we're having.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, how does that account, how does that account for, it's a little bit taking it one step further, but as far as our capacity to take in individuals, I assume that once we would hit our capacity, we just would not be able to take in more juveniles?
We would not. We have not reached our capacity in well over 10 years because of the way the laws have changed for detaining juveniles and what you have to do in order to meet that criteria. So our, we had 15 kids, which is the most we've seen in many, many years. Our detention facility can hold up to 23. Clay County juveniles would always come first, so if we did run to capacity and we needed that spot for a Clay County juvenile, then we would have the other county come and get their kid, because we would, of course, serve our community first.
Very good. Commissioner Withington?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2023 Ordinance 14.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 14. Discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close. Oh, I'm sorry, I put you back on. There you are.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 2023 Ordinance 13. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 13 is the reappropriation and revising of the current year budget for the Park Fund in acceptance of the Missouri TRIM Program reimbursement grant, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Mike Driscoll, Park Director. For several years, we have participated in the Tree Resource Improvement and Maintenance Grant through the state of Missouri, administered by the Department of Conservation, and this resolution asks for the acceptance of these funds and the reappropriation into our budget line for landscaping materials and basically trees, so we can purchase more trees this fall and get them in the ground throughout the park system. We lost hundreds of ash trees since the Emerald Ash Mower has decimated ash trees throughout the state, and this gives us a good chance to get another 40 trees probably purchased and planted this fall with these funds back in our landscape line. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion related to 2023 Ordinance 15? Commissioner Wagner?
I move to approve 2023 Ordinance 13.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 15. Any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to, let's see, 20, we just did 15. No, no. I'm sorry? Yeah, it didn't come up that way on here. That brings us to 2023 Ordinance 15. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 15 is the consideration of reappropriating and revising the current year budget for the Parks Fund for reimbursement from the City of Liberty's Pilot Extension Program, and Assistant Director John Davis is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Parks Director. This is a request for reappropriation of funds for specifically Parks Historic Sites Advertising Budget. The historic sites applied for a, in a pilot program through the City of Liberty's Visit Liberty Tourism Program for funds for advertising for tourist sites, and this one specifically for the Jesse James Bank Museum on the square. Historic Sites has spent $1,445 in advertising in two magazines. They're requesting reimbursement of the funds that the county has already received the reimbursement check for, and so they can continue on with more advertising.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion on 2023, I'm sorry, 2023 Ordinance 15? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 15.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 15. Discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to 2023-189. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-189 is appointments to the Kansas City Tax Increment Finance Commission. This resolution is sponsored by Commissioner Nolte.
Thank you. I would like to make one amendment onto this. In the, in the copy under the 1, 2, 3, 4th, whereas it has in the amount of $3.3 million, I have gotten some update information, which I think is being distributed. That revised number with the information I got from the Kansas City Commission staff is, and I would like it changed to read in the amount of $6,903, excuse me, $906,900. So that would be $6,909,000. So with that, I don't know, I'll go ahead and just say that, like I said, this is revised number. I think one of the things that this shows, this is how serious this matter is becoming. When I originally drew up this resolution, the 3.3 was what I was getting. It has increased in that interval to this amount. So with that, are there any questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. For those who have just seen this for the first time, I might suggest both mentioning, if you may, what you have done to date to ask for the, these individuals to be sitting to better, for us to better understand why we were going through this, but I may also request the county councillor just to explain, if you care to, or whoever cares to, the reason why we have these positions that need to be appointed, just to kind of give that back out.
Before we get to that, though, because what's on the floor right now is the amendment, and I do want to, I do want to cover those, but I wanted to go ahead and get the amendment out there so that when we begin our discussion, it would be starting it from the accurate numbers involved.
And I'm happy to make a motion to approve the amendment as.
Very well. Motion's been made for the approval of the amendment to 2023-189. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Amendment passes six zero.
Excuse me, go to 2023-189 as amended. Yes, and I do want to go ahead and flesh this out a little bit. It was, one of the things about titling this was it comes off as a little bit confusing. This is not a matter of the county's delegates being, I should say, commissioners being nominated. What in fact has happened, and I'll give, I'll try to give a brief background, and obviously, any questions, I'd be more than happy to address. Essentially, what has changed in relation to how the county participates in TIF commissions is that we have the combination of being a population in excess of 250,000 citizens, and we are a charter county. That brought about a state statute that had been on the books for some time, which changed the way, the makeup of the different commission, different TIF commissions. Leading up to this, we have in fact participated in several other municipal TIF commissions, those being the Smithville TIF Commission, Liberty TIF Commission, and North Kansas City TIF Commission. The change essentially said that the county would have six as opposed to two members on these commissions, and that the number of city commissioners would in fact be reduced to three. So that's, that's sort of the background of it. Having gone through that process beginning last year with some of the municipalities wholly within Clay County, those went off pretty much, we had the discussions, we, and we were able to name those TIF commissioners, and those commissions have gone forward and done their business. Kansas City has a number of unique aspects to it, the first being that there are a number of the TIF commissions that Clay County participates in that are not wholly within Clay County. Some of them are within other counties, so that makes it a little bit more complicated. The other is the City of Kansas City has a number of TIF projects going at any one time. The other municipalities within Clay County generally meet on an as-needed basis. So as a result of that, the TIF Commission of Kansas City meets on a monthly basis, and we break into subsets depending on what political subdivisions are being taken, what issues within those political subdivisions are being taken up. We have in fact named our six members, I think it was last December, I'm not entirely sure of the timeline, but they have been, they were named some time ago. So far as I know, the only, the only ones who have not named their commissioners is the City of Kansas City. They have, up until this time, they had six members, of course. That amount will need to be reduced to three. I have talked with the mayor, I've talked to the city manager about this a little bit and tried to get some motion on this. We had, the hope was that they would be appointing their three members in the first couple of months of this year. Unfortunately, that did not occur. I had brought up during those meetings that we really needed to resolve this issue. There are some concerns about the fact that we were operating as a commission under the old membership rules. It was my position that I expressed that we needed to have the requisite number of representatives from each political subdivision. Starting in April, as these meetings were being noticed, all items having to do with reimbursements or any other business within a Clay County jurisdiction was being suspended. Those items were being removed from the agenda. The next scheduled meeting of the TIF Commission, I believe, is this Tuesday coming up. That will be three months since any business has been transacted, since any reimbursements have been released for Clay County and their TIFs. Also included in that are any amendments. My understanding is there may well be an amendment for one of the TIF commission, or excuse me, TIF projects that is under the Clay County part of the Kansas City TIF Commission, so that is being held up. It's my opinion that, like I say, I've talked to both the mayor and the city manager and some members of the city council. As I, as I pointed out in some cases to some of the folks here, if we as a commission, in this county commission, chose that, it was felt by a number of commissioners that there needed to be a meeting, a number of those commissioners could in fact get together and call a meeting of this body, which I think is a very positive thing. Unfortunately, when it comes to TIF commission, my understanding is that that is not the case, that those, they are convened by the city, the city sponsoring, in this case, the City of Kansas City, and up until this time, and I've been given to understand that there will be no more county business for Clay County TIFs done. My concern is that this could go on for quite some time. As I pointed out when I made my amendment, at the time when I started working on this, the amount that I got from the staff at the TIF Commission was $3.3 million worth of unreimbursed fees. That is now 6.9 plus. Just to do a little bit of background, these reimbursements are made from the funds that are held by the TIF Commission, and they reimburse work already completed by various vendors. So if a vendor is going to come in and do some, say, roadwork, or whatever it may be, they submit their qualified expense that goes before the TIF Commission, and then there's a vote, and those monies are released. That's because they are so active, that is one of the reasons why there are monthly meetings, so that there is a good cash flow. I've got a lot of concerns about what it would mean if these reimbursements continued to be withheld, or at least not distributed, might be a more accurate way to put it. That brought me to the point to where I thought that I needed to come to this body and ask that we consider calling on, as it says in the resolution, calling on the mayor and the city council to basically do what they are required by state statute to do, and that is to assign those three members so that we can go forward and make sure that we don't have any unnecessary delays in any TIF projects that we have going right now. I think it's important that when government deals with vendors, that there is a high level of confidence that they will be paid and paid in a timely manner. This puts some of that into doubt, and that is one of several concerns. This puts some of that into doubt, and that is one of several concerns that I have. I'll go ahead and ask if there are any questions of, of the other commissioners, and then after that, I will recognize the councillor, and you can kind of fill in any gaps. And if I get any questions that seem to require a more scholarly response, I would defer to commission, to, excuse me, councillor for any of those, any of those fine points of law. With that, Commissioner Withington.
So this, we're saying we're missing three people haven't been seated on the Tiff Commission?
That is correct.
So how many people total are we supposed to have?
Twelve.
Twelve. So we have, the Kansas City Tiff Commission's website says we have seven. So would that be four then, or is the website missing somebody?
I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't quite hear all that.
So, so counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven people are listed on the Clay County, on the Kansas City Tiff Commission? So.
Are you talking, are you counting alternates?
Oh, there are the alternates up there. Okay, so, so we're, so we're missing three people, and because we're missing three people, developers aren't, haven't received six point nine million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, basically.
So what, what does this resolution do?
The resolution has the effect of just expressing a sense of the commission, it has no, we have no, this is not threatening some kind of a lawsuit or any kind of a legal action. This is basically the commission saying, please do your job, which I think is, is an important step. I realize it may seem symbolic, but I, I think it's important that we stand up for, for, you know, positive economic development here in county.
No, I get that, standing up for positive economic development, but if this does nothing, why don't you just do what you did with the Royals and write a public letter?
Well, first off, that, that goes off onto another subject, so that's not, I, I can't comment on that because I would be varying from the subject at hand in front of us. This is, this is something to do with the county, the county's business. This is something that has been public, and there is no private negotiation here or anything like that. These are all public meetings we're talking about. And so, and, and this is also a matter of not negotiating some sort of, of another arrangement. This is us saying, please obey the law. Please honor your commitments under the law.
So does Platte County have the same problem that we're having?
In part. They do in that, if you look at your list, the Platte Purchase roads, and I tried to break out, those amounts that were just within Clay County, and those were ones where we shared jurisdictional authority. So Platte Purchase and some of those others are areas in which the county has, Clay County has seats, and Platte County also because of the footprint of the Tiff project, like the Twin Creeks, Platte Purchase.
What about Jackson County, they having this problem?
Uh, no, they are, the, the Jackson County, as far as I can tell, they, their reimbursements are going out on schedule.
Have you worked with our city council, our Northland City Council members on this?
Uh, I've, yeah, I've talked to principally Mr. O'Neil.
Have you talked to Heather Hall, or Teresa Lur, any of them?
They've, actually, yeah, Teresa Lur, yesterday was on a phone call I was on, so yeah, we've been trying to do that, and so.
So what are they doing, how are they working through this? Like, and so, how are we going to find a solution for this? Because us approving this con, this ordinance, like you said, does absolutely nothing, so.
No, I wouldn't say it does do absolutely nothing. I mean, it does not have a legal aspect to it. What it does do is expresses the, the will of this commission, and I think that brings it up to the attention to where I think it's easier to get us to have our commissioners and other people to start, to start bringing this to the attention of the mayor.
So if we get three more members on this board, the developers will get their six point nine million?
Assuming that they are voted, that those are, are approved.
So who's pushing this? Which developers, because I, this is the first I've heard of this. And I'm kind of surprised that we actually have a resolution on the table, because it was my understanding that we were supposed to have discussion items before we had a resolution to vote on.
That's not, that's not a rule, that's, that is something that is in practice at some point.
Well, that's what I was told when I tried to get something earlier this year put on the agenda, so.
I don't know that I was in that discussion, so I can't answer that. But, and I am content if we decide that this has to go for another week. I, I thought it was important to bring it up as soon as possible because the clock is ticking.
No, I understand that. I just want to make sure everybody's playing under the same rules, you know? Some commissioners aren't being told that you have to have a discussion before you have a resolution, so, all right, I'll let somebody else talk.
Commissioner Lawson, please.
Okay. Actually, I had the same instance as he did, that I, I, there had to be more discussion before you could have a resolution. Here's my only problem. I think that we have a little bit of a gap right now between ourselves and the city over the Royals thing. I don't think it's a big deal, I think that the press has made more of it than we probably felt there was involved in it. However, having that said, the way that this is set up, it kind of, it says the failure of the mayor and the governing body of Kansas City. It, it sounds a little aggressive. I'm fearful that this is going to widen that gap between the two. I don't think it's a bad thing, I want to see these people get their money, they deserve it. But, but I would rather see us have an open dialogue with, first of all, with the mayor, and just say, okay, Mr. Mayor, we've had a meeting, the, all the commission feels, as do I, that we should move forward with this. What's the holdup? You know, you're hurting these people, they're short their money, and, and all your reasoning, as you said it, to us, and go to him and say that. Then, if he doesn't want to fess up and get this thing done, then I say we go whole hog in and we push. But I, I'd like to see that happen, I'd like to see maybe a meeting between you and our Northland commissioners, or aldermen, what do you call them?
Council members.
City council, yeah, have them all meet with you and, and say, maybe have them push a little bit, too. I don't know that they've done that, they may have already, but, but to, to do it as a body, the three of them, and kind of push to try to get him to get off a dead center. And those things being done, and it doesn't happen, then I say we go for the gusto. But I'd like to be a little more gentle, if you will, in the way we handle this, so we don't widen that gap between the two facilities.
Well, the thing is, this, these discussions started happening as early as last October, I believe November. Just how patient are we willing to be?
I realize that.
And if work begins to, if work grinds to a halt, we're talking about halting projects that have to do with roads and those sort of things, my opinion was that the county regarded those projects as important.
No, you, you know, you're really right, Jerry. It, it has been a long while, but we didn't know that at the time, so I'm saying, and the, and the, the public didn't know, or anything. So it, it's kind of been one of those things where, yeah, it's been being talked about and pushed, you've tried to push and do it properly, but it didn't work. But I think that, I think I'd like to see it go progressively the way I, I talked about. And the council people push, you, as our presiding commissioner, talk to the mayor face to face and say, hey, come on, if you're not going to do this, then we're bringing it out to the public, and we're pushing because these people deserve their money. Give him, give that chance out there, so then you can say, when somebody says, well, look at Clay County, they're pushing against Kansas City, they're trying to make the mayor look bad, you can say, hold the phone, here's all the things I've done behind the scenes to get this done properly, and he doesn't want to deal with us. That's all I'm saying. I, I think you're going in the right way, I agree these people should be paid, I'd just like to do it a little bit differently, that's all, than, than jumping this out there right away.
Well, I've had some of those discussions, and I feel like I could be more productive with those discussions if I could say I had the commission behind me on this.
I, I think you can say you have the commission, I think we all agree that this should be done. I'm just saying, before you throw it out there in public, I'd like to see you.
But it is in public now. It is, it is in public, this is an open meeting.
Well, it is in a limited way. We both know that the whole body of Clay County doesn't watch this. So I'd, I'd just like to see it, that's, this is just my opinion, you've got your opinion, I'm just telling you what mine is, and then we can see what everybody else thinks, and we can go forward.
Well, like I say, it's been, it's been six or seven months.
Yeah.
I think it's time to, 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 to have a little bit more of an expression of what is in the best interest of this county. If, if we go several more months on this track, which I believe is going to be the case, if nothing changes, how much more will this be, at what point will we be compromising some of these projects? I, I think they're still going to go forward, but you've got to remember, the other thing that, that strikes me is, this money didn't appear out of anywhere, this is tax money.
That's exactly right.
These tax dollars were meant to be expended on infrastructure and other Tiff-related issues. The public's money is being held in abeyance, and, and has, I think, put into doubt some of these issues, or some of these, some of this progress we're talking about making, so it's, it's, you know, is it, is it right to pay the contractors? Yes, it is, it was the deal. If government's word is not good, then what, what are we doing here? But secondarily, and really more importantly, is these are taxpayer dollars that we have some, we have some say in, and we need to make sure that we, we assert the interests of our taxpayers.
Well, and, and you're right, and we do have, we should be protecting that right. However, like you said, this isn't, this isn't going to push him off a dead center, and my fear is that that will make him dig in. You know how he is. I shouldn't say this in public, but he, he's, he might be offended, let me put it that way. So I sincerely, you know, like I say, majority rules, this is just one woman's opinion. Of course, I'm always right, but other than that.
I always tell my wife that, yes, the ladies are always right, that's, that's always what I, I tell her. When it comes to asserting these, the, the interests of our taxpayers, the, the, the emotional thoughts of the mayor are not overly concerning to me. Commissioner Wagner, I believe you wish to be recognized.
Thank you. So I will just say, first, I've, I've, this is probably the first time in my life I've heard a Clay County body care what the mayor of Kansas City thought, so that's, that's interesting. However, to the meat of it, so, these are all reimbursements, people are carrying the cost of this expecting to be paid. I, because if they're not, then they're left holding the bag and wondering when they'll ever get paid. That is not a good sign, as we talk about doing business in the Northland, we talk about running things as a business from time to time, so if we are not going to, or it's, I think we have to be very careful, because if we put out the thinking that, well, we'll just kind of let it play out, then that means perhaps some of the projects that are supposed to go on with these Tiffs may never get done because someone may question, will I ever get reimbursed? I, I would suggest that if we want to hold a week to communicate it, I mean, honestly, if you want to text the mayor of Kansas City right now, his phone number is right here in this phone, and we can do that. But having said that, there is, I'm going to use lawyer-y, so county councillor, tell me if I use anything right here. One must put someone on notice in order to get them to cure the issue that's been brought before them. Is that a lawyerly thing to say?
I think we, we'll call that lawyerly.
We'll call it lawyerly. Because if there is an issue, and this, and this body has not made an official request for the mayor of Kansas City to take action, then he has no reason to cure the issue. So I would suggest that if we do want to wait, I'd wait a week, because I would certainly not want to wait longer, because I have had the opportunity to speak to staff with the Tiff Commission. I've run into them on various occasions, I asked them about this, because I'm aware of this. The city of Kansas City knows what they're supposed to do, the city of Kansas City just isn't doing it. So whether or not we want to make them feel good or bad about it, state statute is what state statute is. If the city of Kansas City is not going to take action, then we may have to compel that action. Someone will then ask, well, did you tell them to do that? Well, we could say, well, our presiding commissioner told them so, or we can do something officially that says, here is, here is what we want you to do. Whether one wants to change the, the verbiage of, of this resolution, I'm, I'm okay with that. The point is, they're supposed to do something, they're not. However we get them to do it is fine, but again, if, if you'd like, I can text every council member in the Northland, but I will point out, too, in two weeks, there's going to be an election in Kansas City, Missouri, and potentially all but certainly three of our Northland council members will change. And so we can either try to get that action done now, or wait till new people come in, and then we've got to educate them on what, on what's going on. I'd prefer to do something now, but I'll certainly wait a week if that's what the body would like to do.
That's certainly, that's certainly a very good point to raise, because if we wait until, until the August seating of the new city council members, as I've said, this is probably not going to be number one on the agenda. They have a lot of other things to do. That means, as you say, they will need to be brought up to speed on this issue. There is a notification requirement on a lot of these issues, generally, I believe it's in, in the line of ninety days. So if something doesn't get done soon, we're looking at reimbursements, maybe going out the door November. And like I say, in the short time that this has, that I've been working on this, that three point three has gone to six point nine, I don't know the dynamics to see where it would go from there, but I appreciate your comments. Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized.
Thank you. First of all, just let me say, I totally agree, and I assume county council's going to confirm for us in a moment, that it is definitely the case that state statute, because of the population and, and charter county changes, that, you know, we're up, you know, that the changes in the Tiff Commission membership are obligated. So it needs to happen, to the extent that it's holding up developers getting reimbursed, obviously that's a problem. And I, you know, would, would share in a general sense of disappointment that it hasn't happened sooner. That being said, I think the question is, you know, what's the, what's the best way forward in terms of getting the thing resolved? It doesn't sound like a tremendous amount of conversation has happened, it sounds like maybe it's a little bit has happened. For example, I, do you have like a clear understanding of, have they told you why they haven't done it? Has the conversation gotten to that point?
Uh, no, most of the time the conversations are less clear on their part. When I ask them, I get asked about another subject.
Yeah.
That's happened.
No, I got you, so, but what that tells me is that the conversation hasn't been, doesn't, hasn't had quite the depth that I would want it to have, right? So I, it, I'm unclear as to why it hasn't happened. I, I would hope that a conversation would help to elucidate why it hasn't happened. You know, Commissioner Wagner mentioned that we can reach out to city council people, I think we, more of us can do that, can reach out to the mayor directly, and, and my preference would be that we make a little bit stronger of an attempt to do that, and give it, at least until the end of the month. I agree, we ought not wait till the next council gets seated into August, that's an unnecessarily long delay, but I feel like we could give it a few weeks here, let the Kansas City elections come and pass, and if they haven't, if the conversations with them haven't been fruitful by the end of the month, I'd be happy to, to consider something like this. I really agree with Commissioner Lawson, though, you know, that fifth, whereas especially alleging failure to perform official duties, I'm not overly inclined to, to vote on a resolution alleging failure to perform official duties at this stage. I don't feel like I've done, had enough conversations with the mayor and the council to, to take it to that level. And so my suggestion would just be that, you know, acknowledgement that it's a real problem, but, but I'd rather go the old-fashioned route of having some conversations and giving that a few more weeks to play out, and then if nothing goes, then maybe we revisit. That's just my view.
It's my understanding that they have no intention of appointing those members until the new commission is, new council is seated. So then, then we will be looking at those reimbursements going out October.
Yeah, so when you say that, though, who, who's told you that?
It's been conversations with some of the, some, with, with, with some of the folks that we've been talking about.
Okay. Well, what I would love to do is allow several of us to, to have those conversations as well, maybe try to get answers to questions like, why haven't you done it? And encourage that it happened prior to August, so that. Um, and encourage that it happened prior to August, so that, to your point, I don't want the delays to continue and for projects to not get reimbursed that, that should, you know, that will qualify under the, uh, uh, these TIFs for reimbursement.
Uh, by the way, I, I didn't mean to be evasive in my answer, but what I'm trying not to do is I'm trying not to be as, I'm, I'm not trying to be unnecessarily provocative by calling individuals out in open meetings like this. My concern is that it would be counterproductive. I would certainly wouldn't mind sharing those conversations, um, you know, but like I say, the idea is to, um, i- i- is to get the process along so that our projects may, may continue. Um, so I didn't, I didn't want to come off as unresponsive.
Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate the discretion, frankly. Um, I, I just, I think I'm, I think I'm more aware Commissioner Lawson is at as of this afternoon anyway. Um, I, I do also sense that there can be a bit of a, a, a gap in hard feelings, uh, between the two entities right now, and I do feel like if we pass an official resolution alleging failure to perform official duties, I feel like that might widen that gap and, and make, make these conversations and, uh, relationship with, um, Kansas City and the mayor. It, it might lead to digging in, like, like has been suggested. So I would rather give us a few weeks here, and if, you know, the end of the month rolls around and they haven't moved, um, that is about the time I think I would be more inclined to, to support something like this, although even then, I, I don't know that that fifth whereas is the way I would word it per se, but in terms of an official resolution saying, look, this needs to happen, and, uh, that we all agree that it needs to happen at that time. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, where you can?
All right, okay, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you. I, I agree, or I appreciate all the comments that have been made so far, and I particularly really appreciate Commissioner Carpenter's comments. Um, I have several questions and several comments myself, and one of the things, I guess it's in my DNA, but I'm always looking for motive. What's the motive here on, on anybody's part when it comes to particularly politics? And I've mentioned it before, the reason why I got into politics is because I hate politics. And so to get to motive, I have several questions I have first. When it comes to the TIF Commission, how many are supposed to be on that commission total?
I believe it's 12.
12? Six from the county?
Correct.
Under current law?
I'm sorry, the, uh?
Correct.
Counselor, yeah.
Six from the county?
Correct.
Three from Kansas City?
Uh, six from the county, three from the city, two from school boards, one from all other districts.
Okay, and besides the three from the county, by the way, or from the city, the city had six, so basically they don't have to pick three, they just have to eliminate three, so they get down to three, right? That is, that is an absolutely great point, and that was one that I had, that I have tried to make, um, in my conversations, that is this. Um, the mayor, the process, if I understand correctly, Mr. Counselor, is the mayor would nominate, they would be approved by city council, then they would be seated. That is obviously the reason, waiting for the new city council members to be seated. However, um, there are in fact 12 members, six members, six alternates that the city, I believe, has. That means, and I, I take your point, and I believe that would be the most efficient way forward, and that would be the mayor, um, could either ask, or someone could volunteer who is on the TIF Commission presently to step down to where it would bring it to their requisite three. Those three have already been approved and vetted by city council. So my point of view, my non-legal opinion on that is that those, that then we would be able to go forward and do the business of the people. Okay, so we take, let's take those three out. That gives us nine that have already been appointed, right? Our six and the other three?
I believe the other subdivisions have, because the two from the school board would not have changed, and the, uh, the last one from, uh, under the heading of other taxing jurisdictions, I believe, is held by, uh, the Mid-Continent Library Board.
So that's nine out of 12.
Yep.
And that's certainly a quorum.
Yep.
And, but you're saying that that quorum can't call their own meeting and approve these things that, uh, these funds have to be dispersed.
My understanding is that we cannot, is that, is that the way you understand it, Mr. Counselor?
Yeah, I don't know if they're, if they're calling their own meetings or not at this point. I don't think they are. I mean, I think our, at least my perspective would be that, um, we are not, if they're meeting, we're not, we're, we still don't have our representation. Uh, we need our full complement of people at some point to be lawfully, uh, uh, you know.
What do you mean we?
So I don't think, my understanding is right now, they are not, they've not seated all of our people.
All the county, the county's people.
I think we're, I think we're okay. I, I think that once they have been assigned, I don't, I, I'm not a, it's been a long time since I got onto the commission, but I don't remember being sworn in or necessarily recognized. But one of the conundrums is this, if we have six people and all six people of the city show up, which ones get to vote, which ones don't?
Right.
And, and for that matter, even when you get, when you say vote, that means to vote to, in, in, in fact, start the meeting, approve the agenda, those kinds of votes. So if you've got 15 instead of 12, which, you know, how, how do we as a, a commission, a TIF commission decide which three city people stay and which three don't? That would be why it would be, uh, I think that the most effective cure, assuming it is legal, would be for the, for three of those individuals to leave the TIF Commission, leaving the, the, uh, three that have already gone through the process with the city. I can say, I, I, I would hesitate to say that is an absolute, uh, possible way to go, but it's a possibility that I would like to see at least explored. But the issue right now is they won't even have a meeting because they're saying we don't have the, the people in place.
No, they're, they're saying we're not having a meeting because we're not having a meeting. They're basically saying there would be no, there would be no items on there dealing with the, uh, the, uh, TIF, the TIF projects that I had listed.
And that's something that we have no control over, and the TIF Commission has no control. But you're saying, you're saying the mayor essentially of Kansas City decides that this TIF board is going to meet?
The, the, the notices are, uh, well, they're sent out by TIF, uh, staff, but on the other hand, TIF staff works for the city.
Okay, so that's one thing I'd like to explore is if, hey, if, if we have a, a quorum on the TIF that want to meet, why can't they meet? Can they meet? Can they call their own meeting? Does, does, does the mayor actually have that much power to, to tell a, a quorum of the TIF that, no, you can't meet? Those are things I'd like to find out.
Well, the other part of that that makes it tricky is if you need to have, I don't, if, if you need to have a majority of commissioners, are we then running afoul of the sunshine law? So it gets, it gets a little bit murky when the city refuses to put Clay County issues on the agenda.
Okay, the, so moving on here, so that's, that's one issue I think is a little murky. The, the other thing is, um, so the main issue here is we have businesses in Clay County that are not, that are not getting reimbursed, uh, TIF funds.
Correct.
And, uh, and I've mentioned this to, to Commissioner Nolte, uh, before, but one of my concerns is, is standing, uh, and who has standing on this? So the county's not losing any money on this. It's these businesses. And my thought is, okay, if this is a businesses that aren't making their money, why aren't the businesses going after the mayor and going after the TIF Commission and going after Kansas City and saying, hey, where's our money, our, our almost $7 million that we're missing? And certainly, from a county perspective, my thought is, although we don't have standing, um, one of the things I ran on, a lot of people did, is pro-business, and I certainly want to stick up for our businesses if people are cheating them out of money, and it sounds like they're getting cheated out of $7 million, that they're almost $7 million they deserve so far. And I would certainly want to go to bat for them. But at the same time, there's a balance I think we have to strike in the sense that, um, you know, we talked about rebranding our county, and we branded what we want to be and what we want to do, and, and get rid of past lawsuits and, and all those issues that were in the past. Probably the, the number one thing I think the, the media would like to pick up on is another fight between, uh, Jackson County and Clay County, and another, another, uh, they already tried to go down that road with the Royals, um, and, and the, and the mayor's comments about that, and we don't need that, we don't want that, I don't care for that. And, and I do care for the businesses in our county. I do want to make sure that they're getting what they, what they need, but at the same time, I want to make sure we do our due diligence behind the scenes and not necessarily make a public issue this if, if we don't have to, and certainly it already is a public issue. But, uh, you know, the, one of the comments was, it's been six to seven months since you've been, uh, working on this. It's new to some of us, this is the first we've heard of it this week, but in six to seven months, if I'm not mistaken, you've only talked to the mayor once about this issue.
No, that's not, that's not correct. And, uh, two things. First off, working on it that long, I was being told, we're getting, we're working on it, we're going to get it done. So, okay, there was no reason to bring it forward to this body because of the fact that I was being told, yeah, we're, we're solving the problem. Uh, secondarily, and I, I think I'd like the, uh, the counselors, uh, uh, read on this, because I'm not overly sure as far as standing goes, because we are, as a county members of that TIF Commission, we are members and therefore I think have standing to, uh, petition the, 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 uh, body to do its job in the same way that you as a commissioner, if you felt that we were not doing our duty on this board, you would have standing to come forward and say, I got a problem with what's going on here. And I would, you know, I, I think that's a positive thing. So I believe we do have standing.
The 7 million, standing for, hey, we want our $7 million, I think that's with the business. Standing for, hey, we need to be on this TIF, per state statute, we now need six positions, and you no longer have six positions, which could be more motive that, hey, now that the county's going to have more positions in the city, that could be one of the motives involved here, I don't know, but that's what I'm trying to, to figure out here. Um, certainly we can have some standing, and then that's the road we'd have to go down to, or would, do we, do we sue, uh, you know, Kansas City because they're not putting our people on, on, on the TIF board, that kind of stuff.
See, I'm not, I'm not recommending a lawsuit.
And I'm not going down, I'm not going down there, but, but you have to think, okay, if we take this step, what's the next step? No bluffing involved here. If you take this step, what's the next step? And what's the next step? And you, you gotta, we've got to have our endgame. And, um, six to seven months, uh, how many conversations have been had with the mayor, who apparently has a holdup on this, about this issue?
Not easy to get to see the mayor. Most of my conversations are with city manager.
Okay, yeah, so who has no authority whatsoever over this? It's the mayor who's, who's holding this up, from what I understand.
The city manager works for the city council.
I'm very familiar with what the city manager does, but there's no, been no conversation with the mayor.
Yeah.
Except for one.
Couple, actually, yeah.
So, and, and along with what Commissioner Carpenter's saying, I would like to have an opportunity for more of us, maybe all of us, to make a phone call to the mayor, say, listen, this is what we're dealing with. Um, we got to get some movement, and whether it's, it's dereliction on his part, or he's purposely stonewalling, or he wants to wait till after election, whatever it is, I would like to make sure that we're clear with our concerns to him behind the scenes, if you will, on a personal, before we have to go down this road of, hey, we're, we're going to pass a resolution, which really doesn't have a whole lot of, of, of weight behind it, except for it makes it out in the public and to give something for the media to chew on. Um, and again, that goes back to the concern I have for our image and our branding and that kind of stuff, you know? If we can work out something behind the scenes relatively quickly, I'd prefer to do that. Um, again, I do want to be pro-business, and I do want to stick up for our businesses, but I haven't heard the businesses making any stink about this yet either. Um, and I'd also like, you mentioned a conversation with, with the mayor. I think it'd also be incumbent upon us to reach out to the, the city council members in the city as well, um, in Kansas City as well, and have a, you know, because several of us have different relationships with those city council members, certainly, uh, Commissioner Wagner's probably got a pretty good relationship with a lot of them. Uh, I know I do with a few, everybody does with a few of them. I think it'd be incumbent upon us to reach, reach out to them as well, because they may not know the whole situation as well. Um, so I, I, I guess, I, I don't necessarily disagree with, with your resolution here. Um, I just, I don't know that we've done all our due diligence behind the scenes. For one, hey, does he really have that much authority to stop this TIF from meeting? We need to find that out.
Mr. Counselor, do you have a, an answer on that one? I realize it's a little bit arcane.
I think it's, yeah, I, I'm not going to opine too much on what authority the Kansas City mayor has, other than it is a practical matter, it appears that that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's from a statutory matter, I, I can't opine on that because I, obviously I don't represent the city, uh, but it's pretty clear that this is being delayed. Uh, and I, I know, I, because I've talked to their attorney on this, uh, and, and I think they're trying to work through it, um, but I think the attorney is not quite sure, um, what the city's intent is, and that's probably the most I can say right now.
Okay, just speculating, I could guess that maybe the city's not happy that we now have six votes and they get three?
I think that's, that's certainly, I mean, I can tell you, I mean, larger background, all of the cities are unhappy about this. And that's, you know, and, and, and to be honest, when, you know, when the Constitution passed, I mean, this wasn't necessarily a focus of it, it's actually an odd statute. My understanding, when I dug into it, is it was written because of concerns that arose out of the St. Louis side, uh, and trying to keep the smaller cities from having too much authority on the St. Louis side, but it now applies to us.
Which, which may very well be the motive why they don't want to convene this TIF, because they don't want to acknowledge that we have six yet, they're trying to refine a way around that. Because before, Kansas City had six on the TIF, and we had?
Two.
Two.
Myself and, uh, and, uh, Trevor and Nancy.
The county had two and Kansas, and the city of Kansas City had six, and now we have six and they have three. So certainly there could very well be a motive there, but I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon us to do a little bit more, now that more of us understand what's going on, to let us have maybe a couple of weeks to push some things, uh, and see what we can do and get more information, uh, before we go down the throw. I mean, I would be in favor of, depending on what everyone else says, and I'm not throwing a motion out yet, but I'd be in favor of maybe table on this for a couple of weeks to see if there's something else we can do behind the scenes, uh, before we, before we make it a.
Well, table, uh, by the way, just as, as a reminder, a tabling motion is non-debatable, and it would close discussion. So if your intention is to close discussion, that would do it.
Well, you heard what I said, Joe. I said, I'm not putting out there right now. I said, but I'm not, I, I would be in favor.
I've already indicated that I would be okay with delaying it. So I mean, I, your, your motion to table, when I've expressed my willingness to delay this, is confusing to me.
Okay, did, did you hear me make a motion?
No, you had, you had.
Okay, then it's a mute point. I didn't make a motion. If I make a motion, you can make a comment on it.
No, I can't.
I didn't make a motion, don't put words in my mouth.
No, I, if you make a motion to table, no, I cannot make a comment, because that is against the rule. Table is a privileged motion. So you had said you were contemplating, making it, you, you brought up the idea with tabling motion.
I moved to table this motion.
Okay, motion's been made to table? That ends discussion? Sorry, Commissioner Wagner, you're cut off. Uh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
That concludes our regular agenda. That brings us to discussion items. Administrator, I believe you have the, the first one, which is We Care.
Jessa, are you there? I'm here, can you hear me? Are you hearing me okay? Yes, I'm here. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. Um, thank you for your patience and staying on. Um, we started tonight's meeting talking about children and the importance of our youth and relationships with the youth that have with our SROs. Um, and so we want to kind of.
Continue some dialogue with, about the youth in our community, and one of the challenges, especially with parents, face is childcare. And so the county has actually been approached, um, by the United States Army and Department of Defense to consider participating in a pilot program for the Army, the Army Reserve, and the National Guard in a childcare pilot program. So we have, um, participants in, um, today's presentation coming to us by Zoom, and Jessa, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Um, so we have two individuals. Uh, the first one is Mr. Ivan Bolden. He's, um, Army Partnership Chief. He is the Chairman of the Joint Services Partnership Committee, and he is at the Pentagon. Uh, unfortunately, um, we did our Zoom earlier to make sure everything worked, um, and Mr. Bolden has been called up to the Hill to meet with Congress and is not going to be able to be with us live on this Zoom meeting. and is not going to be able to be with us live on this Zoom meeting. However, we were able to record some of his information. So you will hear from him on some of the slides going forward. That is a recorded presentation by Mr. Bolden. However, his assistant, Aaron, is on the Zoom call and certainly will be available to answer any questions and talk a little bit more about the program that the commissioners may have some questions about. And then also, we have on today with us is Jessa Santit. I'm going to mess up your name, Jessa, so I'm going to let you finish it. And she is Vice President of Business Development, which is with We Care, which is one of the partners being proposed in this pilot program. And so with that, we're going to start with the next slide. And this is going to be a recording of Mr. Bolden to talk a little bit about this program.
Wonderful. And I do believe Mr. Bolden, um, can come to help answering questions as well. So I'm going to go ahead and play this for you all now.
Thank you for participating with this much needed project of the Pentagon. The Army and the community has been long relying on one of them. I actually have a thing that we can do what we do inside the gate without the help of those great communities outside the gate. So with this, we are, we want to try a childcare pilot program. And the legislation that goes into it in U S B twenty six seventy nine, just an intergovernmental support agreement. So the agenda of this pilot program is to provide childcare to intral and weekend and emergency deployment. And the agreement would be with Clay County. And with entrance legislation, we can do it within, with the city, a county, a state of, of the general. And Clay County meets the spirit and intent of this legislation. So what we have arranged is Clay County to partner with a private childcare provider, in this case, We Care, to provide childcare services. Take five please. Now, this is a pilot and it's the first of its kind in the United States Army Reserve and the National Guard. Our proposal is that Clay County will enter into, as a governmental support agreement, with the Army Reserve and the Army National Guard. And then Clay County will enter into a public private partnership to provide childcare services within the Kansas City region. We Care, the private entity, can token the, uh, the legislative legislation allows for a public entity to partner to provide these services. Take five please. Thank you for the, the different cities and regions that we are planning for this pilot to make happen. I am pretty excited I'm present in this region and so I'm well aware of some of the cities and counties that you have. Take five please. So the pilot is, what we've done is it's a one-year pilot. And it'll have nine one-year options. Partnering jurisdictions that have listed in the previous slide at first party. Clay County will have a partner and a contact with the reserves and the National Guard to resolve any concerns or issues that may come up. But it is since I am the lead of the Army, I am personally involved in this. I'm also the Chairman of the Joint Services Partnership Committee. So for all of the O D, we have oversight meeting and I'm the Chairman of that. And this is the first of this kind of program. Once we get everything signed, we plan on having a signing ceremony at the Pentagon. And we hope to invite you to participate in and know that you can. We're going to minimize any county funds or none that is required for this program. And for that to be appreciated, take five please. Okay, and the invoice process is fairly simple. And the invoice, We Care will provide an invoice to us and the county. And then that will be, that will be at the same time. And then we will verify that invoice is forwarded on to the Pentagon or then forwarded on to the Defense Accounting Agency. Or then, and sort of, you know, send the funds to the city to pay We Care for their services. So it's pretty simple. It's basically just a pass and that's, that's the way we, none of a hundred and thirty of these. That's how we, for other type of portions. And it works fairly simple tomorrow morning. I'm having a call with all of the people that will be involved in this pilot program just to make sure that this invoicing process works. And we don't anticipate any issues with that. Take five please.
Amazing. I would actually like to switch over to, that is, actually, where we're switching over into a live channel. So you can actually experience and see what it would be like for the reserve guard and community members in your community. So I'll do that now. What's going to be really amazing, I'm actually still thinking, is I were coming and some service and his wife is in her. She actually has very scheduled for the weekend. So there are things that they have, they don't have full time care, that they would be able to provide on the weekend. They'd be able to learn about the amazing programs through the, and Clay County, read more about it and get started right away. This I have talked about, it's really, it's pretty easy. And they're able to actually also see jurisdiction, eligibility documents right from the beginning as well. Cutting time back for many is the old way of having downloads, paper, email them, that or anything like that. All of the weekend building, they'd be able to collect which days of care they need, child care form. They'd also be able to access at any time, prior to time upon board as well. Once they get into feeling bad, they would let us know a little bit about their tires. A volunteer or seven months old. They're going to let us know about their needs. For example, they're looking for someone that would be really great with potty training and working with children with educational needs. Once they go through that, they are able to then come meet, they get approved and with their child care, now I'm, myself, is a female host. And what is really incredible is the whole process of all five minutes. And the whole process was taking, you know, up to three weeks to get these for a benefit. What was amazing, he also kind of managed all right in some scans. So he actually laid our proof for two hundred and fifty dollar box and tuition. Gets thirty childcare days of care for the weekend drill. And he also, that's a good child care, now I'm sure myself. I'm going to go ahead and show you some of the features here. So he'll be able to ask them need and anytime messaging, video, call. And he actually let us know he's been struggling with child care in the community. And he was wondering if we could help him find child care for the week as well. And of course, again, we're going to be able to come here, the entire experience for him. He'll go ahead and let us know which county he needs care for, what days of the week he needs care for, and then that creates the request. What's really amazing is our incredible mapping algorithm. Actually, mapping gives me, for example, especially because he's been tired. We are then mapping him all occasions that only have in his face. So he doesn't have to spend time, homeless ability, flying out. If they have to wait for things that are not. He's then be able to actually steward a facility and see the whole of the facility, including safety, licensing regulations and quality information about the program. We have an incredible stewarding here. So I actually, I showed you how he can hopefully schedule his steward right within the app. And I'm going to fast track you by after scheduling that steward to the day of the steward and experiencing some of the other house chores. He would get his in-app notification and I would be there to hand open through his entire process. But he would get a notification by the steward upcoming. He'd be able to then connect and virtually steward the facility and learn more about it. Once he's completed his steward, we are collecting ongoing safety information and quality information to also make sure it was the right match for him. He loves this facility, so he's actually going to go. He's going to go right away and we are going to handle this through that whole process. What's incredibly awesome is that, if you see on the screen right here, he's taking his steward's stuff, he's registering his sign-up form and subtracting the benefits that he has. And their whole billing system manages all of that. He's able to pay this, go pay what parents need with a credit card, bank account, of course checking pass. But most parents are using the credit card and bank account. Once he does that, he confirms his booking, he'll need to access his enrollment paperwork and he would help support him with any sort of records or information to get set up for the first day. Now, what I'm going to do is go ahead and fast track you to the very first day of care. And what's really amazing is he can be able to sign in once he's got all his titles and so there's a security sign to see. And what's really amazing is he also are tracking real-time fee dependence that gets accurate time fare. But it is important for those physical payments, we have a reduction in any sort of errors considering how full time and real-time. And then, once he actually involved, he could use a photo and video on these, what he's doing throughout the day, stay connected. He can also access the curriculum and activities that they're learning within the facility and connect with the community at large. There are tons of other tools. For example, he could actually sign care all on his own. And once they're mapping through the exact weekend for your program, available either 24 hours or open on the weekend. But where's your ultimate goal for him? There's so many more names, but I wanted you guys to see, to see how easy it is for any kind of program now to really truly help support the reserve guard, main house, the quality and support childcare with these standards as well. I'm going to go ahead and switch back over to the slides now.
So Jessa or Aaron, could you please clarify, I think, because it's a little bit lost in the presentation, what truly is the financial benefit to the individuals of our community that are in the reserves or in the National Guard through this program?
So, so this is Ivan Bolden. I'm actually standing outside of Roman on the Capitol Hill. So may I, may I answer that question, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So the financial benefit is, over the past years, guard and reserve personnel have had a difficulty in finding weekend childcare. If it's Monday through Friday, it's not as big a problem. But particularly on weekend, and why this was attractive, We Care's solution was attractive, is because they have over 50,000 childcare providers. So that if you're National Guard and there's an emergency of deployment, We Care can provide service within an hour or two. We don't have that now. And I've spoken to the Assistant Secretary of the Army, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Army, and all the senior leaders in the Army. And they have, they're all excited about doing this. And that's why we wanted to showcase that Clay County is stepping forward and helping, helping our guards and reserves.
So for clarifying for the commission, so, and as we kind of tried to show on the diagram of the invoicing, because, well, this is a great benefit to reservists and National Guard. The funding is coming from the federal government. There are no county dollars associated with this, which is why we tried to show the flow chart of, the county would enter an agreement with the federal government through the I G S A. We'd also then have an agreement with We Care to provide those services, those scope of services, the childcare. But both of those agreements, and we've had as staff multiple meetings, including the auditor and our legal staff meeting with We Care and with Mr. Bolden going through the agreements. So in essence, we will not be responsible for any financial costs. It is simply being a conduit to pass through the federal funds and to reimburse We Care for those eligible expenses that have been approved by the manager here onsite in the Kansas City area that will review all the invoices from We Care and really authorize those to the federal government for payment. We'll also have copies of that so we can have our checks and balances. But all we're doing is the conduit for the funds. So I want to clarify that, that there really are no direct costs. Now, reality is, there are some administrative costs, right? So we will be taking in money and we will be, you know, electronically paying We Care and so we'll be passing through some funds. We did include in the agreement with We Care that the county could keep an administrative fee to offset our administrative costs for basically doing the processing of payments. However, we left it as that we could do it. Because if we do take some of those funds, then it is taking away from the funds that are eligible to be used by our reservists and our National Guard. There's a pot of money that will be allocated for this pilot program. And so whatever we keep, then is not available for childcare. So my thought is, and my recommendation, if the commission is interested in this program, is that we don't start out by taking any kind of administrative costs. We need to see really what it is entailed and the timing of staff to process collecting the money from the federal, receiving it and then passing it on electronically to We Care would be our recommendation. So that would be it, besides marketing the program to all of those that would be eligible in the Kansas City region, which basically are 10 counties within the region. And I think, Jesse or Mr. Bolden, I think you had a number of reservists and National Guards in this area that could be benefit from the program. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And they're excited because we've been talking about it. And, you know, there's a community benefit to this. Just think, we're going to do, we're doing two pilots, one here and one in Iowa. But we're going to bring you both into the Pentagon. I will bring the full force of the Department of Defense Public Affairs and the Army Public Affairs. And we will, you know, the ceremony we have in the, we will have in the Pentagon will be in private. And there, you will get a lot of notes from our people, the staff stepping forward and helping soldiers in this pilot childcare program overall.
So I would turn it over to the commission for questions from either We Care or from Mr. Bolden from the Department of Defense.
Are there any questions from the commission? Or comments for that matter? Seem to be none.
Well, then, I guess staff would ask for direction. Is the commission interested in pursuing this arrangement and participating in the pilot program?
I believe we should. I think that's something that I would like to see us as a commission go forward on. My opinion doesn't always carry the day, but I think it should on this issue. Is there any objection to that direction to staff to continue, to go forward? Oh, thank you very much, Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks. No, I was just going to chime in, if we were going to go around or not. But I think it makes a lot of sense, you know, no real risk financially to us and to the extent that we can help be part of a program that, you know, helps our folks who serve the country, I think we ought to do it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree. You did just ask him for a number. Did he ever give that number?
Oh, I don't know he did. Mr. Bolden, were you able to provide to us how many are in the Kansas City region that are in either the National Guard or reservists?
I don't have that number, but I can get it to you. I'll have to go back through the National Guard and through the, through the chief of the Army Reserve. But I can probably get it to you within 24 hours.
We certainly know that, certainly in the Kansas City region, when you look at, it takes in Warrensburg, which we know their, our bases there, Leavenworth. And then we have individuals who retire from there or, you know, get out and stay as reservists and stay in the region. So, and I do believe that at one of our meetings on the phone, they did provide a number. So we can get you some information about that. But it's a substantial amount of individuals and families that could benefit from this program.
Let me add one other thing. When we spoke to the National Guard and the Reserve, they were the ones that recommended this particular area. So I'll get those numbers and get them back to you as quickly as possible.
We do have a report too on the surface territory that I can make sure for over at the top to be estimated number of individuals that are eligible. And if I remember correctly, that's 20,000 that would be eligible for.
That may be the number I'm referring to from previous conversation.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, no, I just want to say I'm in favor of moving forward with this too, so.
I was going to say, I got head nods all the way around. So I didn't think that necessarily necessarily go back, except for the, obviously, the comments. necessarily go back, except for the, obviously the comments that were asked for. So if that is the consensus of the commission.
Thank you very much. Then we will bring forward to the commission the two agreements for your consideration on approval. And Mr. Bolden and Jessa, I will be in touch with you, and we'll talk about next steps on your end.
Okay. Thank you very much, particularly to the commissioners for hearing us now and for hopefully helping with a severe gap that we have of childcare for soldiers and the families in your region. We appreciate the opportunity and your time today, and wish you best of luck.
Thank you so much for your time. So I appreciate it and looking forward to working closely with you. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, that would conclude this discussion item. That brings us to the next one.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Sorry.
That brings us to the next one administrator, which is the roads maintenance projects.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. As part of our annual program, we analyze our roads and put together our annual maintenance and preservation program. And so we have here this afternoon Terry Griffin with the Highway Department, who's going to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. This afternoon, I'd like to discuss with you the 2023 Road Maintenance and Preservation Project. The Clay County Highway Department, as you know, is responsible to maintain, repair, replace, and improve roads and related infrastructure in unincorporated Clay County, which includes roads, bridges, box culverts, under-the-road culvert tubes and pipes, and a variety of other infrastructure. For several years, our annual road resurfacing plan has been primarily a pavement maintenance plan, not a pavement preservation or pavement improvement plan. Federal Highway encourages a long-term strategy that enhances pavement performance by using an integrated, cost-effective set of practices that extends pavement life, improves safety, and meets motorist expectations. We have a responsibility to maintain a road system that residents are happy with and that is within our budget constraints. But it takes years of proactive management to build up a consistent program so that it moves from a maintenance-only program to a preservation and improvement program. It doesn't happen overnight. Even a year or two of neglect can take several years to recover from in both the physical aspect of pavement condition as well as in support of the public. Understanding how pavement condition affects the cost of repair or maintenance is an important part of planning a preservation and improvement program. The graph shows the typical cost of maintenance for an asphalt surface. As the pavement ages and begins to deteriorate, the cost of treatment to maintain a good road surface increases. Note the costs shown on the right side of the graph. One or $2 spent to preserve the pavement while still in good to fair condition in the yellow section will become many dollars more as the surface continues to deteriorate down into the orange or red sections, poor and very poor. Early preventive maintenance and preservation treatment reduces the overall cost while meeting FHA's, FHWA's, recommended goals of extended pavement life, increased safety, and motorist expectations being met. Pavements don't last forever, and they require maintenance, much like your car or truck would. You don't want to wait until the engine blows up until you change the oil. The same goes for pavement. You may note that the rate of deterioration also gets steeper as the pavement deteriorates. Once the pavement gets below about a fair rating, there's a very short window before it fails completely. Pavement preservation reduces the rate of pavement deterioration and saves money. This graph illustrates how spending $1 on maintenance now, when the roads are still in good condition, will save $4 or $5 in reconstruction costs if preventive maintenance is ignored. Rate, based on our 2023 costs, applying microsurface when an asphalt pavement is still in fair condition, one lane mile probably will cost somewhere between $23,000 and $24,000. But waiting until the pavement is in poor or very poor condition will cost $92,000. When measuring the miles of roadway, the department must maintain there are two measuring standards, linear miles and lane miles. A linear mile refers to the roadway length and ignores how many lanes the road has. There are 377 linear miles of roadway in unincorporated Clay County. If all the roads were laid out in a straight line, the road would extend from Liberty to the outskirts of Chicago. Lane miles, on the other hand, refers to the measurement of total length and lane count and is calculated by multiplying the linear miles times the number of lanes. Since all of our county roads have two lanes, that's 377 linear miles times two, or 754 lane miles, the distance from Liberty to Albuquerque, New Mexico. Determining the lane miles is a more accurate way of describing work that needs to be done since both lanes of every road must be maintained, and many tasks require that each lane be maintained separately. In the presentation today, anytime I refer to miles, I'll be discussing lane miles. The Highway Department is responsible for about 324 lane miles of asphalt roadway, 364 lane miles of chip seal roadway, and 73 lane miles of gravel roadway. This translates to 42% asphalt, 48% chip seal, and about 10% gravel. So let's talk about the different types of surfaces. Asphalt and chip seal payments, pavements are similar, but have very different installation and maintenance needs. County asphalt surfaces are typically placed by a contractor who has the necessary equipment to pave long stretches of road. Asphalt is laid using a paver and hot mixed asphalt, an asphalt roller smoothes and compacts the surface, and the end result is something like what's seen on the inset on the right side. With timely maintenance, an asphalt surface can stay in place for up to 20 or 25 years, sometimes longer. With microsurface preservation treatments, the life can be extended more or less indefinitely, but I wouldn't say forever. The chip seal surfaces are generally placed by highway staff. First, a primer coat of oil is sprayed in place with the distributor and allowed to cure. The seal coat of oil and chip gravel is then laid on top and rolled to compact the material. The finished surface is seen on the left. With the timely maintenance, a chip seal surface will stay in place for about seven years, but that life expectancy can be extended with timely preservation applications of microsurfacing. We continuously strive to keep up with newer methods to keep our roads better and extend our pavement life. Microseal is a preservation treatment that may be placed on top of either asphalt or chip seal. Once the microseal is in place, it's challenging to see the difference between chip seal and asphalt surfaces. Microseal over chip seal is shown on the left, and microseal over asphalt is on the right. Microseal costs about one-third the cost of an asphalt overlay and extends the life of the surface by about seven to nine years with each application of microsurface. The micro-surfaced asphalt surface on the far right has been in place since 2017, and although it's beginning to show its age, the surface still retains integrity, and we don't expect to have to resurface this or reseal it with microsurfacing for another one to two years. Multiple application coats of microsurfacing can be added over the years to lengthen the life of the surface before complete reconstruction is needed. And finally, we come to a gravel surface. Gravel surfaces need frequent, regular maintenance. A mortar grater is used to remove potholes as they develop and to smooth the road surface. Small gravel is added to the roads regularly to provide traction, and is especially necessary after a rainstorm or when snow and ice have been on the road. The photos show what you can see is an obviously poor-conditioned gravel road and a well-maintained gravel road. Upgrading a gravel surface to chip seal requires more than just adding the new surface. The road may need to be widened to accommodate higher traffic speeds, which means under-road culverts may need to be replaced or lengthened. Utility locations verified and other ditch adjustments may need to occur before an upgraded surface can be applied. The cost of upgrading is not typically included in our standard operating budget. Each spring, the county roads are scored by highway supervisors. This is done by driving each road and visually inspecting the condition of the surface. Road surfaces are scored on a scale from five, which is excellent, to one, very poor. It's worth noting that the gravel surfaces are always given a score of zero. They require a completely different maintenance schedule and different types of maintenance than any paved surface, so we don't score the gravel roads. Roads that are scored five, or excellent, are shown here. A chip seal, the chip seal surfaces are shown on the left and the asphalt surfaces on the right. They are in excellent condition and require no maintenance. The photos show roads with smooth surfaces and clean edges. Roads that are scored four are in good condition. Little or no maintenance is required, and all cracks are tight or sealed. The chip seal road on the left shows evidence that the oil used in the last resurface is still active and will hold the road surface in place for quite some time to come. This is a normal look for the road and is something we like to see. Although the asphalt road on the right has a small crack in the center, the crack is still tight, and it's not yet ready for any type of sealing or maintenance. Roads in fair condition are scored three. At this point, there may be slight ravelling at the edges of a chip seal road, multiple cracks can be seen in asphalt, and there may be a few patches on either type of surface. Each road is still structurally sound but is beginning to show signs of aging. Routine sealing is recommended at this point to extend pavement life. Roads in poor condition, scored two, show severe surface degradation, wear in the wheel paths, and possibly rutting. Asphalt surfaces will show the beginning of alligator cracking, and chip seal surfaces will have extensive pothole repairs. Roads scored one are in very poor condition and are in need of complete surface reconstruction and possibly base reconstruction. Surfaces show loss of integrity, extensive potholes, and severe distress. Asphalt surfaces will show extreme alligator cracks. Because of the freeze thaw cycles that cause expansion and contraction of paved surfaces, winter damages continues until after the last hard freeze in the spring. Therefore, we don't score the roads until spring. The time it takes to complete the scoring process depends on other workload, as well as out, like all outdoor tasks do, what the weather is like. When roads are wet or covered with rain puddles or snow, it's difficult to see the condition and score the roads accurately. Once all the roads have been scored, the Highway Department must process the raw data to determine the resurfacing needed in an ideal world, that is, if we had an unlimited budget and unlimited staffing, and then pare down the list to stay within budget and staffing limitations. This graph depicts the 2023 road scores by lane miles. The county has a total of 323 lane miles of asphalt in the blue bars, and 293 of those miles are rated as being in excellent to fair condition. Only about 30 miles are considered to be in poor or very poor condition. With 363 total lane miles of chip seal, shown in green, about 250 miles are in excellent to fair condition, and 115 lane miles are in poor or very poor condition. Or to look at it another way, about 79% of county roads, chip seal and asphalt combined, are scored as excellent to fair condition, and about 21% score as poor or very poor. That's according to our recent, the surveys that we did in the spring. This year, the commission has approved an asphalt budget of $1,761,000, $510,000, it's getting too late. We estimate that over $900,000 will be used to overlay existing asphalt, and the remainder will be used to upgrade chip seal streets to asphalt. This summer, we anticipate overlaying about 12 lane miles of asphalt with a two-inch overlay, including a mile and a quarter in one subdivision with curb and gutter, which will require milling to remove the worn top layer of asphalt, which creates an additional expense. We also plan to place three inches of asphalt in an overlay over several subdivisions with a chip seal surface that is in poor or very poor condition, but where the underlying base has not yet been compromised. This will extend the useful life of the neighborhood streets by three to four times and reduces the overall cost of maintenance in the years ahead. This year, we plan to overlay asphalt on about seven miles of subdivision road. Adjustments may be made to this list of proposed roads once we receive a complete estimate from the contractor. Optional streets for addition, for three-inch asphalt overlays are shown in the event that our plan is significantly under budget. The approved budget for chip seal resurfacing this year is $990,000. Based on the contracted price of primer and seal oils and chip gravel, we estimate that the Highway Department staff will lay about 74 lane miles of chip seal. It's important to note that because of the way the county budget is organized, this cost includes only the cost of materials. Equipment and labor costs come from other line items and are a part of the total cost, but they don't affect this particular $990,000. Here's the list of proposed chip seals resurfacing. As we progress through this scheduled work, we will keep an eye on expenses, and if we remain significantly under budget for time and dollars, we will add additional roads that are not currently included on the list. Microsurfacing to preserve and extend the life of both asphalt and chip seal roadways will be applied in 2023. The budget for microsurfacing is $952,600. The contractor's estimate that we have right now will allow 39 lane miles to be preserved with microsurfacing. The roads that will be preserved with microsurfacing are shown here, with optional streets that will be included if for some reason the actual costs come in lower than anticipated. The asphalt overlays will be completed by Superior Bowen Asphalt, and microsurfacing will be done by Vance Brothers using the Platte County Co-op, Co-op bid. Starting dates for these projects will be set in the next several weeks and will be completed by this fall. Chip seal resurfacing will be done by the Highway Department crews and will begin later this month. We've already begun the prep work that has to be completed before actual chip seal resurfacing can begin. The Highway Department website will list where and when resurfacing or preservation work is expected, along with information on what local residents can expect during construction. The site will be updated throughout the summer season, and of course, all projected dates will be weather permitting. So overall, this is what the budget for road maintenance and preservation looks like this year. $1.7 million for asphalt overlay, $990,000 for chip seal resurfacing, and $952,600 for microsur, microsurface preservation. The total amount budgeted is $3.7 million. This $3.7 million represents an opportunity to begin to increase the overall quality of road surfaces in Clay County and is a step towards meeting the goals recommended by the federal, by Federal Highway of extending pavement life, improving safety, and meeting motorist expectations. In the last year, we've all felt the effects of high inflation in our wallets, and the Highway Department felt the pinch in our purchasing power. To stay within budget in 2022, the department had to reduce the planned miles of chip seal and asphalt resurfacing and canceled microsurface preservation altogether. As noted earlier, a few years of neglect can take several years to recover from in terms of the physical aspect of pavement condition. While the Highway budget for road resurfacing and preservation has increased, our material costs have continued to rise. We are seeing double-digit increases in the cost of road oils and closer to 20% increase in the price, rock prices. You've seen this chart previously. About 79% of our chip seal and asphalt roads are scored as being in excellent to fair condition this spring. With the projects outlined for this summer, we hope to see the scores look more like this in the fall, with almost 93% of county roads in excellent to fair condition and only about 7% still in the poor or very poor category. Of course, after fall comes winter with the expected freeze thaw damages, so the road scores will look very different than this by next spring. But each year presents an opportunity for us not to just maintain, but to improve and preserve our roads. And I would be glad to answer any questions the commission may have.
There's a lot of information. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Withington.
Thank you for giving this presentation. I think that was really helpful. So what else do you need from us to make sure that all the roads that are poor or very poor get moved up to fair? I know you said there would be seven, right now we're at like 21%. In this fall, you guys are looking at 7%.
Right.
So what else, and I, and I understand, but what else would you need from us? Because I know we all, pretty much all ran on improving our infrastructure, and I know our citizens aren't happy with the way the roads are. So what else could we be doing to help you guys get those scores up and keep them up?
Long-term, what we need is not a maintenance program, which is still what we're basically seeing here. We're taking the poorest roads, we're putting a surface back on top of them and making them viable, but we're not necessarily preserving enough of our roads that are in fair condition so that they don't continue to deteriorate. That's a budgetary thing. It's, it's dollars. The microseal is always done by a contractor. The asphalt resurfacing to improve chip seal roads and put an asphalt surface on top, another very expensive proposition, but again, the asphalt surfaces hold up substantially better than what the chip seal surfaces do, but at four times the cost of a chip seal surface, it's hard to say, well, we'll do one mile of asphalt and just forget the other four miles of chip seal.
So do you have a price tag for all that?
$3.7 million this year to do what we've, what we've outlined.
No, I'm talking about to get all the roads up.
Oh, well, that would depend on what you want to do. Do you want to bring all of the chip seal roads up to, with an asphalt surface? Or do you just want to maintain the roads that are chip seal as chip seal and asphalt as asphalt?
Ideally, I'd like to, I, this is why I wanted to have an infrastructure committee and I tried to talk about this a few weeks ago and it went nowhere, but I think the commission needs to create an infrastructure committee to where we're working with you to answer those questions so we can put together a 10-year road maintenance and improvement plan. So I would like to see us take that topic back up and actually look at creating an infrastructure committee to work with them to answer that question, but yeah, I appreciate everything you and Carl are doing. I really do.
Just as a, just before I came, I put together, we have currently 363 lane miles of chip seal surfaces in whatever condition they're in. If it, if, and this isn't if, it only costs $103,000 per lane mile, which is roughly what we estimate it will cost for asphalt this year. That is over $37 million. So you divide that by 10 years and you get 37, $3.7 million a year just to put asphalt over the next 10 years on the chip seal roads. That doesn't include preserving the existing roads during that time. It doesn't include resurfacing with asphalt or overlaying asphalt during that time. It's pure, and that's today's prices. That includes no inflation in that number.
So that'd be 3.7 on top of the 3.7 you're already getting?
Minimum.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. That was very informative. So if I understand this right, all the roads in the county you have scored already?
All of the county maintained roads, yes.
And is that available for public to see? Is that online somewhere that the public can see how their roads are scored?
We don't have it online right now, no.
Is, um, is there some, is there a reason why we don't have it online? I mean, is, and I'm just thinking through this out loud, is there pros and cons to have it online?
There are pros and cons, yes. One of the cons is that obviously from my presentation, you see that we're not able to resurface all of the roads that are even in poor condition this year.
Yeah.
And the question then becomes, well, why did you do this road and not the road that I live on when there's evenly scored or, or my road has more traffic than yours, than the one that you've got over here that's being resurfaced? Why can't you resurface the one that has more traffic even though it's in fair condition instead of poor condition? And those, those questions are not impossible to answer.
Yeah.
It just is, uh, it's, we just need to decide what we, what the commission wants us to do about that, so.
So, so my thought is, your job is pretty much a thankless job and no matter how hard you guys work, you're going to get complaints.
This is true.
And, and every, particularly every time winter's over and the potholes show up again, you guys are the bad guys again. I, I will mention, I did put in a, online, actually I didn't do it under my name, I did it under my wife's. We had an issue in, in front of my house for the, some potholes that caused us to either go off the road or, or into oncoming traffic, or like my son just goes straight through the potholes and realign our front end, but nonetheless, we put in a request and I think within a week you guys had them filled by about four or five potholes. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good job on that. But I think it's important for the, I think it's important to brag about what you do and to let the community know what you do and how, and I think even just scoring these roads, just acknowledging, hey, we see your road, we see your road is a mess right now, we see that your road is scored number one. We know there's a problem. It isn't, it is on our list and we're going to get to it. I think there could be some value in that. I think there could be some value in, in posting some of the things that you showed us here that, hey, this is what we have coming up. We are going to get to your road this year or next year, whatever it is, but the further out that we can project those kinds of things and, and tell our community, hey, we see you, we see your roads, and we're going to take, take care of them when, when we get the money or when we get the, the resources or whatever, but I think that goes a long way and I'd really like to see you guys brag more about what you do, because you guys do a lot of work. Your staff does a lot of work and people don't realize, this is a, it's a constant battle. It's not like, okay, you put a road down, now we're good for 20 years. No.
No.
After next winter, we're not going to be good again. There are going to be some potholes, that kind of stuff. The more bragging, I think, the better.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I did see, and this is a, a very selfish plug here, but I did see you had one of these maintenance things on your list here, 112th Street between A Highway and Plattsburgh.
Yes.
That you had coming up. I just want to remind you that, that west of A Highway, there's about 900 yards of 112th Street before it hits Kansas City. That section, which you guys did fill the potholes in, is sometimes overlooked, so I'd ask that you keep that in mind when you do the, the rest of 112th Street.
We will keep that in mind.
And again, that's a very selfish request there because you know why, but it, it often does get overlooked and that's because we're right there at the city limit of Kansas City. Kansas City doesn't want to come over our side and we, so I'd, I'd appreciate that. But, but to Commissioner Whittington's point, I, I really would like to find a way that we, as a commission, can support you guys more and whether it's, it's some kind of infrastructure committee or something, because like I said, most of us ran on this and it's an issue. And it, it's really going to come down to staffing, money, and, and the direction from the commission.
And I didn't mention staffing, but staffing is an issue for us right now.
And that was the next question I had. Do you happen to know or, or can you give me just a general, doesn't have to be exact, but, but how short-staffed are you? What issues are you dealing with the staffing right now?
Um, right now, our operation staff consists, including two supervisors of, and well, I'll, I'll include our shop staff in there, so it's 16, 18, 19 people, and we have five openings.
So you have five openings, right now you have 19. Fully staffed, you'd be at 26?
Yes.
Okay.
No, 24.
And fully staffed may or may not even be enough?
That's very possible, yes.
Yeah, so I get it. You don't want to say that in front of the county administrator, I get it. So the, um, staffing, why, is it difficult to fill those positions?
Yes.
Just because people don't want those, I guess everybody's having difficulty filling positions. Is there anything we can do to help get those positions filled?
I don't know what the solution is. We've had, at least four of those five positions have been open for more than a year.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah, well, yes, Carl points out, we also, up until about a year, a year and a half ago, we required a Class A CDL for all of our operation staff and we've lowered that to require a Class B CDL.
Okay.
And we still are getting no applic, basically no applications.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I, I do appreciate what you do. I, I live out in the rural area and, and I, and we drive a lot on the rural roads. There's some that are spectacular and some not so good, but I noticed the other day, I had a number of people call, I let Carl know about it, and in nothing flat, they were fixed, so I sincerely appreciate what you do. I would like to see one thing. I would love if we could, we, the commission, could have your projection of, here are the roads I'm going to fix this year, you know, that kind of thing. What that does for us, because I'm getting calls all the time, I, for the first time, I had somebody stop by my house to talk to me the other day. That's going way over the line, but, I mean, as far as, I'm happy to do it, but if I could say to them, well, look, your road's going to be fixed three months from now, or we're probably not going to get to it till next year, but at least to be able to give some of these people some hope, and I'd, I'd like to know that. I'd like to see that.
In the next, we can certainly provide a list to you. In the next couple of weeks, you'll see that information on our website, along with projected dates and so, of both for each type of resurfacing.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. That moves us on to our next issue, which is communication tourism update. Administrator?
Thank you, commissioners. And we are excited, it kind of leads into some of the conversation of questions we had about information out on our website and communication to our residents of the different things that our teams do. And so as you know, once a month, we're bringing to you a couple of departments to give updates on what they're working on, what they've been doing, and certainly communications and tourism is one, and we've combined those together and certainly we're very excited and you'll hear a little bit more about it, our websites and the updates on our websites. So with that, I'm going to ask that Megan Sheffield and Mike Wilson come forward and they're going to give you a brief overview of tourism and communications.
Good afternoon, Megan Sheffield, Tourism and Marketing Coordinator. Let's talk tourism and communications. I'm going to go through tourism first and then I'm going to hand it over to Mike to walk through communications, kind of let you know what we are about and what's going It will go full screen. There we go. All right, quick recap of tourism. It's the movement of people to places outside of their comfort zone, whether it's for leisure or business. We hope to provide them lots of reasons to come to Clay County. The areas we support, areas we serve are Smithville, Kansas City, Gladstone, Liberty, Pleasant Valley, Excelsior Springs, Carney, North Kansas City, unincorporated Clay County, and various other organizations within the county. The ways we market them largely is in partnership with Missouri Department of Tourism. So we have recently gained a Tier Six DMO status. DMO is Destination Marketing Organization. This is a big deal. In doing so, we are now able to participate in the marketing matching grant program, which can garner a 50% match on approved marketing projects. Some, some of those approved channels include social media marketing, search engine marketing, print, TV, radio, billboards. I have a little bit more emphasis on the social media, media and search engine marketing. That's what we're going to be focusing on for the remainder of '23 and moving forward into '24. We will do some print ads as well and I'll kind of get into a little bit more of that. These are some good numbers. I'm excited to share this. So Missouri by the numbers, last year, Missouri tourism had an $18.4 billion total economic impact on the state. It's up nearly $5 billion from the year previous. There were 40.1 million visitors to the state of Missouri, $16 billion spent on taxable sales. Also, $1.5 billion were spent by travelers influenced by MDT's marketing and the marketing of their DMOs, and the amount spent per person per night totaled $321.82. And the tourism industry employs 281,032 Missourians. Overall, the economic impact is up significantly and the total number of visitors is actually trending to pre-pandemic numbers. About 42 million were in fiscal year 2017, '18, '19, and all kind of hovered around there, so we're getting close. Clay County, let's take a little look at our county. In 2022, Clay County saw over $609 million spent on tourism. We employed 11,814 residents and saw over $17 million in property taxes on tourism-related businesses. This is all up from the previous year, so we're trending in the right direction. Some of the projects we've been working on, rebranding, as you can tell, at the government level and also the, the visitclaymo.com website, tourism website, everything is, it's a nod to the previous logo. We did stay with the same color scheme, so not to stray too far, but we lightened, brightened, proved the mood across the board. We are doing a social media revival. It's in the works and it's moving in the right direction. Our reach is up, our followers are up, clicks are up, and the other very exciting project that we're so near the finish line is the visitclaymo.com website. Will be launching by the end of the month. It's a big deal. I'm very excited. Then next, looking forward, these are some of our goals and projected monthly targets for the remainder of 2023 and '24. With the marketing funds we'll be using for search engine marketing, 5,200 clicks to visitclaymo.com per month. Social media marketing, we're looking to get 5,500 clicks to our social pages. Now, these are not just impressions, these are actual click-throughs to those websites. And then in print, we're going to be using a couple of different magazines among those with the various ads that we'll be placing, and we are doing half-page or full-page ads, so we're getting lots of coverage. And this is actually a really moderate number. It'll be 300,000 or more circulation, in circulation between the three magazines. And that's monthly. We are going to reach outside of our, just our region here. We're going to, we are going to market locally. I think, you know, if we can get some folks across that river, it's scary, but we want them up here. There's a lot of great things in Clay County we want to showcase. Outside of the Kansas City region, we are reaching out further in the state of Missouri, towards St. Louis, down south. We'll be reaching into Kansas, Iowa, Nebraska, Oklahoma, and the projection on the ROI, and I got this from our friends at Visit KC and their marketing firm that they saw last year, was $110 for every $1 spent. Any questions?
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate all the work you're doing. Having been on Visit KC Board for eight years, I know the value of tourism and I know the value of work you do, and that's the, I guess the crux of my question, and I remember those numbers, Visit KC would always do that and it's gone up over the years, actually, ROI. So what are we doing with Visit KC? If you can get into a little more of that, because obviously they were responsible for the work on the draft, they're having a
Right.
Big part of what's going on with World Cups, so how are we positioned with them?
So we are continually working on improving our partnership with them, our relationship with them. I've been to every partnership meeting that they open up to us to attend. I've emailed them back and forth on other communications, like, again, preparation for this, getting the numbers. From the last partner meeting I attended, you know, they had a really good section of their deck. I said, hey, can I get that? Send it my way. I will be reaching out to them more, not aggressively, but I just want to strengthen that friendship. So that we are in the loop, especially with upcoming the World Cup. I mean, that's, it's, it's going to be huge. We know we need to be ahead of it as much as we can, so yes, it's a priority.
Then the other question is, if my memory serves, back when I was more involved, there was a, a number of the ad campaigns that Visit KC did with their member partners included a lot of Worlds of Fun, and I'm assuming that they still are heavily involved in that. But my question is more, since I assume that is one of the primary destinations in Clay County, how, have we talked to them about how they can cross-promote or how, or maybe just in general, how can we cross-promote with the activity that's going on at Worlds of Fun with some of our other attractions here in Clay County?
I haven't asked that specific question, but it's a good question to ask. I, my goal, one of my goals with Visit KC is to get, just to get more attention, Clay County and the Northland in general, it doesn't have a lot of representation. If you look at their interactive map, you got Worlds of Fun.
Right.
It's kind of it. There's a pretty exciting grand opening that's going to happen later this year with the Rabbit Hole. I think that's going to be great for our county. I did a tour, I'm beyond jazzed. I'm in very good communication with that organization and I plan on looping them if they're not already looped in with Visit KC, because I think it's a great opportunity to get some blasts on, on their page. If it's a big enough opening, they will set up a separate landing page for it, which is my hope.
Well, to your point, City Muse, City Museum in St. Louis is blasted all over the place and if Rabbit Hole can, can be done in the same way, that's, that's good for us. That's a, that's a good comparison. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you for that. A couple of questions. 609 million up from last year. That's the tourism money that we brought in, right?
Yes.
That was on your slide. How much up is that from last year? Do you know roughly?
So last year, I do. Last year, it was 531 million, just, just over 531 million.
That's a good increase over here. And do you know, and this isn't a test question, but do you know what is the main attraction that's bringing people to Clay County right now? You might have mentioned.
So I've seen numbers break down as to why people are visiting, and the number one reason hands down is to visit friends and family. So I take that and I look at, okay, how are we going to market their friends and family? Let's get their friends and family who live here hyped up about the area they live so that when people come to visit them, they're now going to our attractions. But yeah, that was by far and away, I've got the numbers in here somewhere, I can share them with you later.
And is Smith, is, is Worlds of Fun bringing in numbers for us as well?
Um, I'm sure they are. I don't have those, that exact breakdown, but I've got good contacts over there that I can certainly reach out to and see what their numbers are because they
And how about Smithville Lake? Is that an attraction for people outside our county at all?
It is, yeah. Smithville Lake is an attraction.
And then you talked about social media. And then you talked about social media platforms that you use. Which specific ones?
Facebook and Instagram, and then I'm also investigating the possible working with an influencer.
So Facebook and Instagram right now, right? Are we on Twitter at all?
No, we're not on Twitter right now.
No?
Not to say we can't be, but
And I don't know if that's
We're not currently.
Yeah, I just know, I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, I'm just wondering. And, let's see what's, oh, so new website. You talk about a new website?
Yes.
Is that for the, is that just for tourism, or is that for the whole county?
So the one I'm referencing is specifically for tourism. It's VisitClayMo.com, and that's going to be launching at the end of the month. Mike's going to touch a little bit more on the county.
Got it, thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Carpenter.
I just want to say thanks to you and to Teri and to everybody doing presentations. They're fantastic, terrific, so thank you for doing it.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll move on to the next subject.
Actually, Mike, what, that was the tourism piece, I wanted to go to communications.
That's what I meant, was we'd go to communications, I want to conclude tourism and then go on to the next subject.
Good afternoon, Mike Wilson, Digital Communications Coordinator for Clay County. I'll take over from where Megan spoke. Just like the tourism department, communications is a one-person department. We backfill each other though plenty, so we're in good shape. Just want to kind of give you an update on where we stand for 2023. A lot of new exciting things going on. A new logo, courtesy of Megan for the design, thank you very much. You can see we're using it prominently. Rebranding, certainly trying to restore the Clay County image, the workplace stay is a, a point we're trying to enforce. As you can see here, we've certainly got plenty of new equipment. We're also adding some additional equipment that's going to allow for easier streaming for these commission meetings. And then the new website, which coming soon, and I will have a preview of it for you here in just a moment. So right now, we have our social media metrics. Facebook, we have a little over 6,400 followers. That's up a little more than 300 from December of 2022, so that's 5.2% growth. We are on track to meet our end-of-year goals of 6% growth. Twitter, we are at just about 5,400 followers. We've only had about 1% growth since December of 2022. If you're not familiar, Twitter's kind of been in a state of turmoil with Elon Musk and upheaval. It's kind of driving away some users, so it's not too surprising that those numbers are not being met at this time. Instagram was launched in May of last year. At the end of the year, we had 124 followers, looking to double that or more. We have 228 at this time, so we are on track to meet those goals. I'll get into the website redesign here and show you a look at kind of just a, kind of an overview of what we're looking for. We have a contract with Civic Plus. It's designed to be more citizen-friendly, more intuitive, offering more services that the citizens can do online, because there are plenty of people who would just prefer to do that. We are looking at a launch date of mid-August. And I do have, we just had a meeting with Civic Plus yesterday. They gave us an idea of the website layout. I do want to stress before I move on to it that this is just a layout design. There is no content yet because it hasn't been migrated over. We are in the process of that. But as you can see, vast improvement over what we have right now. We're going to have these global navigations laying out for citizens, kind of just trying to make it more intuitive. Certainly, the categories are going to expand. We've got the social media buttons here. Brighter Image, a banner, and this can be something that we can either change to have a carousel going, to rotate out images, or bring up a new one every time somebody logs in. These buttons here will also carry over to every internal page to some of the biggest things that people want to do. Pay my taxes, obviously, we're always promoting jobs here. Parks, booking reservations, report a concern. This will be our county news center, and again, this is just kind of like a carousel feature. We can do it that way, or you can just set it to have however many we want to have scrolling. And then this widget here is just a, like a how can I, how can we help? What am I looking to do? I want to pay my taxes. I'll go here. If I want to register for something, I can go here. And you see, they have different sizes for each of the tabs. The website is intuitive to work with that. I will give you a quick look at one of the internal pages here. So this is what an internal page is going to look like on the redesigned Civic Plus website. Just another way to kind of lay it out, just showing, again, you can use these, these global buttons will appear on every page, and then if you want to navigate back to the homepage, you just click the Clay County logo, which will carry over. So using the crystal ball for what we're looking for in the future. Always looking at social media expansion. I'm always looking at the possibilities of adding other platforms. Certainly TikTok appeals to our younger citizens here. I'm also considering other, more news-based sites such as Mastodon or Blue Sky. Those are still kind of work in progress, they're still developing their user base. Probably once it gets maybe a bit more, gets a bit larger, probably worth expanding. More videos, longer videos. Since I've taken over, we have expanded the use of pictures on our social media platforms. Would like to continue that, take the next step, which would be videos. Recently attended a Mark seminar about some of the videos that are useful, that other counties, other agencies have seen success with, and they, people love to see like a day in the life videos. They like to see their, you know, their administrators, their elected officials doing something that like our highway department or our parks department does. Something to consider. And then also looking at potentially podcasting with, once the new website launches, to have something there to keep citizens informed. So that wraps up my presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Carpenter.
Just comment, which is fantastic. I know a lot of us have been a long time coming on getting the website updated and redone, so thank you, and it looks like y'all are off to a fantastic start. So mostly, just want to thank you. In terms of the paying the taxes specifically, do we anticipate, have you all been working, you know, with the collector and assessor in terms of making that as easy of a process for folks?
We have, yes. We've had some meetings with both Civic Plus and the collectors, since it is an external website. It'll basically just link out to it, but there doesn't seem to be any issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next and final discussion item then.
So our final discussion presentation is from our Facilities Department to give an overview of what's been going on and what they're working on.
Hang on, let me move this to presentation mode here real quick, which I worked yesterday. Let's see if I can find it today.
I'll be back in just a minute.
Mm-hmm, down there.
You're very defensive.
Thank you. All right. I know it's getting late, Commissioner, so I will try to be brief. I will, as soon as I get my presentation to work.
Yeah, right click.
I am right-clicking here.
Okay, use the arrows.
Yeah, let's go, let me click out of that. I am so sorry. You would never know I was up here yesterday. There we go. This group may look familiar, they were here a couple of weeks ago for the Employee Recognition Program, because they just were awarded the Collaborative Team Work Award. We have 19 key buildings that the Facilities Department is responsible for, and we work daily, and if not, you know, weekly, daily. With some departments, it's hourly, with 33 key different departments. What do we do? We are the jack of all trades. We take the, excuse me, the catch-all of anything that's not going on, if it's not assessor, collector, if it's not parks. We are kind of the cleanup crew. We are the, whatever it is that happens that doesn't fall into another department, we get it assigned. Some of our key responsibilities are our day-to-day maintenance, the building security, the building alarms, the key cards. We are the 24/7 support for whether it be adult or juvenile detentions. And another one of the key processes we have to do on a day-to-day basis is the handling of the county mail and getting everything distributed. We have been busy working on some projects since our budget was approved. The slide that you're looking at right now is a sidewalk that is located down by the parking lot, that is the key parking lot area and the main sidewalk for our detention staff to park their cars and go up to the detention facility. The concrete work you see here was completed about three or four weeks ago, but throughout the county, we've been doing a lot of concrete repair work, including the south steps on this building, over at Rooney Justice and Children's Justice. Not so long ago, I had to come to the commission for some emergency repairs for a cell that is needed for high-risk inmates over at the detention facility. This was damaged to a door, and then getting ready to install the new repaired door with the padded material that is necessary for those inmates. The other slide is depicting ceilings that have had years of damage. This happens to be in our detention inmate visitation side, where we've just gone in. And we've done a new and improved, because there are problems in that area. We changed the security mesh, and we went back in with a dropped ceiling so that we can easily keep the ceiling repaired and not have these years of damage buildup. This slide is because when people think of maintenance, they think, I don't know, hammers and nails. We do a lot of plumbing calls. But this is two pictures in one of our areas to show the amount of like technical skills our staff really need to have. We have a lot of lighting controls, water controls, and everything is electronic, and most of our buildings are on energy management systems. So there is an electrical and a definite skill set in order to do some of the functions that we do. This slide is showing that we, in late '21, got a computerized maintenance software program that we hadn't had before. We are still very much inputting data, but this allows us to be able to pull reports that says, what did we do this month? Or we can even take a day snapshot. What were the work orders we received? What were the nature of them? What was the total for the month? But more importantly, this will help us be able to forecast in the future for budget purposes. I mean, where are we spending our dollars? Where are we spending our time? What needs do we have? And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Obviously, you did a very good job.
Thank you.
That brings us to the conclusion of our discussion items. That brings us to number 11. County Administrator comments. Administrator?
Just briefly, and that is to remind everyone and to invite everyone to this weekend's activities. This is the Juneteenth celebration, begins Friday and Saturday here in downtown Liberty area. We encourage everyone to come and participate. And also then, the commission's next business session is next Wednesday, June 14th, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. Next would be Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Withington? Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Waiting for Mike. He's supposed to, he's
Sorry?
I'm waiting for Mike back in communications, he's going to put a picture up there for me.
Oh.
All right, there it is. So yesterday marked the 79th anniversary of D-Day, and this picture is of Corporal Lewis E. Grace Jr. He was born and raised in Harlem. Lewis was one of 100 and nearly 60,000 Allied Forces who landed in Normandy. He landed at Utah Beach. Known Lewis my entire life. He also would go on to fight in the Battle of the Bulge. And he was also one of the first soldiers into Berlin after the fall of Hitler. And for his effort in D-Day and the liberation of France in 2009, he was awarded the French Legion of Honor, France's highest honor. So I just wanted to recognize him. He passed away in 2016, but still wanted to recognize him, so.
Okay. Commissioner Lawson? Do you have any comments? You need to press your button for me. There you go.
Okay, all righty. Nothing real hairy I have, other than I went to the jail. Went through the jail. It was both informative and scary as hell. There were a couple of situations that left me totally unnerved. I don't know how they do it, but they've got some tremendous staff over there. They're, they're so knowledgeable. That's the thing I'm finding about the, not to just go on and on about the Sheriff's Department, but the thing that I find so impressive is that all of his people are so well-trained. And he does continuing education, which I think is so smart and so rewarding for his people. They all know their job, they know it well, and boy, they've got some guts. You couldn't find me in that jail. I'll never go back, never. But anyway, it was an experience, and I thank him very much for that, and it was most enlightening and scary.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. I'll begin by saying that it sounds like an episode of Scared Straight. So I'm glad we've made one believer today. On a more serious note, and just because for better or for worse, I take action if there's an opportunity. Based on our earlier conversation, and because I had the numbers, I just texted the First and Second District Council members and the mayor of Kansas City, and got responses from three of the commissioner, or the council members, and the mayor, which I will share via email with all of you tomorrow. Otherwise, have a great weekend. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. I'll keep it very brief. I want to thank our highway department, our communications, our tourism, and our facilities for their wonderful presentations today. But I also want to thank all of our county employees, because they make Clay County a better place, and we appreciate you, all of you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Johnson?
You're so nice. I'm still trying to figure out who that young guy was in the picture that you put up there, Jason. The baby-faced kid in that picture. Just a reminder that Commissioner Noel T. brought up some good information today about the issues going off the tiff, and although it's been tabled, I think it's, I just want to remind everybody, it's really important that we reach out to those folks over in Kansas City and make sure we don't let this just go away. We need to follow up on that. And I too want to thank all the staff. We've got great staff, and I appreciate, I really appreciate the presentations, and I was almost going to ask you, Diana, for a presentation, an update on tourism, and I saw it on the agenda, so that was great. I appreciate it, thank you.
My comment is, obviously, we owe a great deal to the veterans, particularly those from the Second World War. The phrase "greatest generation" has been used a lot. The only unfortunate thing about that is, is it's been used so much that it loses a little of its currency and a little of its meaning. While the terminology is one thing, the semantics are one thing, one thing that cannot be denied, that is the bravery and the patriotism and all the other qualities that were displayed both on that day in June so many years ago and since then by our armed forces. Somehow, it seems as though saying thank you is just not adequate. I think maybe that one of the best ways that we can, we can honor those individuals is to do our best to make sure that we create the society and we create the democratic republic that they fought and died for. I think that is the monument, is this great country and our tradition of freedom. So I think that's, that's probably the way that they would like to be honored the most, is that their efforts and their sacrifices indeed would bear the fruit of a free nation that we are today and that we are the hope of this, of this globe. There's a reason people come to this country. We are the shining city on the hill, and let us not forget that that is in due, in very large part, to those individuals who did those heroic sacrifices that gave us this opportunity. With that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.